Everybody ready?
Ready, ready, ready.
Alright. Alright, to call to order a regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Phil, let's have a roll call, please.
Chairperson Bob McCollum.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Lisa Ritchie.
Here.
Commissioners Phyllis Harden here. David Harper. Jared Malley.
Here.
Ben Miller. Jason Reese.
Here.
Anthony Stewart.
Here.
Steve Whitty. Planner Stephen Williams.
Here.
Attorney Anne Harvey.
Here.
Alright, thank you with that. We have time for a public comment on any, I don't think we don't have a consent agenda, but any non-agenda items. We do have a continued hearing tonight, so any items, we'll take public comment on that later this evening, but if there are any comments, public comment on non-agenda items, now is the time. Alright, not seeing any thanks. We'll continue on. This is now a continued public hearing to review and comment on a request for the final subdivision plan for blocks two and four through eleven, tracks A and B and surrounding streets within the Superior Town Center, downtown Superior. Final development plan for both horizontal street and infrastructure improvements for portions of Creekview Way, Marshall Road, Old Railway, and Gateway Drive. And final development plan for the vertical development of blocks four, six, seven, nine, ten, and eleven, and parcel K, which includes a downtown plaza and pedestrian promenade. What we, so as staff, I'm sure everybody has read, we'll do, there's a scheduled meeting next week to look at a PD amendment to deal with the land use change requi, I'm sorry, two weeks, sorry, two weeks, yeah, two weeks from tonight for land use changes. So we won't be discussing that at all tonight. That should be saved for two weeks from tonight. So we have items to discuss tonight based on the direction we requested from staff and the applicant to discuss tonight, and then Stephen has a series of questions he'd like to get some guidance on. So we'll hear from Stephen, we'll hear from the applicant again, take public comments. There won't really be any discussion of any meaning tonight. If we have additional direction that we want to provide to staff or to the applicant for, it's going to be a continuation of this hearing in two weeks, and then sort of a hearing, instead of a hearing, we're still trying to figure that out, but there will be a separate hearing for the PD amendment. Okay? So that's kind of the guidance for tonight. Sound good? Alright, staff? Stephen, do you have any course?
Sure. Can you kill the light? Thank you. So Stephen Williams, town staff, I have a presentation to go through. Again, this is a continuation of the October 29th meeting. At that meeting, you know, Planning Commission heard presentations from staff on the broader proposal. We're not going to rehash that tonight. The goal for this meeting is to kind of give you a general overview of the direction we're headed and why we're requiring the PD amendment, and then to kind of step away from that and get into the variances that we can discuss, as well as the request for PC direction that were outlined, that I didn't feel like we kind of got into too much detail with last meeting. So if there's anything that we do need to rehash from the previous meeting, if there's anything from staff's presentation that you guys have questions on, feel free to let me know. The image above is the 3D rendering that Chase created. The outline is generally the area that the development, that tonight's development application involves. I do have a link to Chase's video. I gave Chase the night off since I'm bringing him back in two weeks, and I didn't feel like we had too much massing concerns that we needed to discuss, but if there's anything that you want to see, he's also given me a number of kind of just snapshot images of the 3D model that we can look for if there's anything on that. And then we also have Alex Aronello here again tonight. He was here at the last meeting, didn't get to talk, and you know how he likes to talk, so we'll get to him on the parking as well. But if you have any questions on the format, and also, you know, I don't want to talk kind of continuously, so if we need to be, interrupt me on a certain topic, I just kind of want to get through the big points, and then we'll move on to the, you know, each one individually, and give Ranch, Morgan Ranch a chance to respond and clarify anything that they feel like they might need to clarify. I do have a video of the flythrough, if you want to start with that, or if you want to come back to it later? Okay. Okay. And I'll probably turn it over to Alex here shortly to discuss the parking, but I did want to touch base on just the, what we heard from you guys last week in terms of the complication and the, and the maybe the incompleteness or the awkwardness of the proposal, I think we're going to be able to address with the PD amendment. So we did consult with the town attorney, and we worked with staff also, as well as the applicant, to arrive at a more uniform application that will involve a PD change. Generally, on the left is the zoning allowances that are currently in the PD, and on the right were what, more or less what Ranch, Morgan Ranch was requesting, which was to extend kind of a flex zoning allowance. And this was their alternative proposal to clarify, but they would need civic space designation here, and then this really should be yellow for the residential clubhouse use that they need on that, on that corner. So this is essentially a better illustration of what they were requesting, and this is kind of the direction we're headed through that PD amendment, which would allow us to preserve commercial corners with, well, all block corners with the commercial use, establish the civic space where it has been designed, establish the clubhouse leasing space where they've requested it, and then kind of reserve the interior blocks for block six, ten, and nine as a flex zone without any residential restriction, which will allow them, instead of the, well, after eighteen months, we default to this or that, it will just be an allowed use from day one. It'll still be built the same way, so Ranch, or Morgan Ranch, excuse me, has clarified why it's their preference to develop those units commercially, and why that'll still be their intent and their driver. But essentially, we've arrived at a place where I think staff can get behind the proposal at the square footages that are, that will be discussed in two weeks. But I just wanted to give you kind of a direction, because this really changes the nature of the application and addresses, I think, many of the major concerns that were identified last week.
Sorry, Stephen, can you say that again? So those spaces that are now, that are now, that are now, that are now shown on the right in blue between the red bars, they will be built as live-work spaces from the get-go?
They could be.
Or they'll be built as commercial space with the possibility of converting them?
So the live-work design that you guys saw last week, and it's, it fits in the retail space essentially, so if the retail doesn't lease, they can build those out as live-work spaces. It's the same, so the reason, I think, part of the reason we're still able to kind of pursue this application as, you know, and be as flexible we are with it, is the shell of everything isn't changing. None of that's changing, nothing on the exterior is changing, and this is all a use change, and that's why the PD is required in order to make that change. The one thing we can't make an exception on to the PD is the use, because it's the zoning, but everything else we can, we can change or make an exception to through an FTP amendment. So that's kind of where the rubber hit the road. I would say that the, the general application, you know, kind of option one, commercial option, was largely compatible with the PD, but the need for the live-work kind of option is what's driving us to require a PD amendment, so.
And Commissioners, just to point out that there's going to be a PD amendment application on the 19th, so in terms of, you know, Stephen's giving kind of a brief overview of the need for the PDA, but I would just kind of reserve questions and, you know, testimony, things along those lines for the actual hearing on the 19th.
Okay. So that'll be detailed in another staff report, and I'll have a more thorough presentation on that part of the proposal in two weeks. So, but I do want to give you some indication as to why we're changing gears and why we're not making a decision on the FTP tonight, too, because the decision on the PD needs to precede the decision on the FTP. So essentially, just so everyone's clear, we've scheduled, we'll schedule a meeting for the 19th for the plan development, and notice it like from the get-go, different than how we've noticed this one, but we're going to also need to continue this meeting to that, the meeting on the 19th, in order to consider them all in the same evening. So I hope that's clear. And then I guess at this point, I'll probably turn it over to Alex to let him kind of present their parking. So this is where I want to get into, you know, this is the first of the, of the variances requests, but I also want to get into like the larger details of the application, like their parking, shared parking proposal, and Alex will address that now, and then we'll get back to the, this presentation. Alex?
Alex Aronello, Director of Public Works and Utilities. First of all, I want to talk about three things. First, traffic impacts, second, the parking, shared parking analysis, and third, construction phasing, answer some of your questions on those three items. First, a master traffic study was completed for the entire Superior Town Center project now known as downtown Superior in July of 2013. It's been updated several times with subsequent development approvals. Major changes included the connection to Discovery Parkway, approval of the Starbucks anchored strip center on the northeast corner of McCaslin-Marshall, and then the approval of the Telsa pad, which was incorporated. So those are the major changes. A trip generation analysis was received for the Morgan Ranch part of it that we're considering tonight, and this indicated that these blocks will generate about 6,300 external vehicle trips on an average weekday with about 194 vehicles entering and 233 vehicles exiting during the morning peak hour, and 320 vehicles entering and 226 vehicles exiting during the evening peak hour. An updated, updated to the master traffic study is in process. I've reviewed a draft to incorporate Morgan Ranch's trip generation, as well as all the other things that have been going on in and around downtown Superior, including the town's decision to connect downtown Superior to the south via Promenade Drive to 88th Street. So we're trying to incorporate all those changes, Rogers Farm, and so forth, to have a master traffic study that is as current as we can get. Since the proposed land uses in this application are generally in line with what were assumed in the original traffic study, we don't expect changes to the recommendations in that study to change. Some of the recommendations had, did include the construction of the main street roundabout, improvements to the Marshall-McCaslin intersection, both of which have been completed. Marshall Road has also been extended to the new Element Hotel. However, it should be noted that the master traffic study included the completion of Marshall Road as a secondary access to downtown Superior. The developer has begun designer this important connection, and approval of this FTP will facilitate its construction. The master traffic study also contemplated a mix of land uses in close proximity, which can reduce vehicle trips since interaction between land uses can occur without the use of a vehicle. In addition, optimistic use of alternative modes was assumed predicated on implementation of a robust travel demand management or TDM program. Staff feels that developers' proposed TDM strategies fall short in this regard, and staff and Community Solutions work with Ranch Capital to develop a TDM plan in 2015, and we have proposed the condition to implement the TDM program based on that plan. In terms of parking, the mixed-use nature of this development will also reduce parking demand since interaction between land uses can occur without the use of a vehicle. For example, residents could walk to work, walk to work or restaurants. Employees can walk to shopping, eating, and recreational facilities, so you can park once and do multiple trips and visits. While the PD contains standard parking ratios for each land use, it allows for reduction in the total number of required parking spaces based on a shared parking analysis, which considers the distribution of parking demand during various times of the day for the proposed land uses. The town approved this approach to parking through the PD to minimize unnecessary use of the downtown Superior area for underutilized parking spaces. Walker Consultants submitted a shared parking analysis for Morgan Ranch. The methodology is based on industry-accepted shared parking methodology using base parking ratios and hourly and monthly adjustments according to the Urban Land Institute's Shared Parking Third Edition. The model considers the captive and hourly shared use factors between land uses along with appropriate local driving adjustments. Key findings of that study. At the projected peak hour, which is anticipated to be on a weekend at approximately 7:00 p.m., the recommended parking supply to serve the project would be 1,067 spaces. The projected weekday peak hour is very similar and occurs at approximately 7:00 p.m. with the recommended parking supply at 1,016 spaces. If we just use the standard parking PB ratios, that would require 1,081 parking spaces. So they're asking for a reduction of 14 spaces based on their shared parking analysis. Staff is in general agreement with the methodology of the shared parking analysis, but noted items regarding assumptions that merit further discussion. For example, the parking demand for the civic space is assumed to be one space during the peak parking period at 7:00 p.m. on a weekday evening, on a weekend evening. While this would be a valid assumption if we had a library or a classroom, it underestimates the parking demand for special events such as large meetings or banquets. So we've talked about that, we haven't really made any decisions, but I think they made a low assumption for the civic space. As the project phases are constructed, and once programming for the civic space begins, the parking impact should be reevaluated. Although beyond the scope of this application, a shared parking analysis for all of Planning Area Two should be completed once there are residents and commercial users in this area to identify levels of demand as well as overflow needs of the sports stable, parks one and two, and other destination uses as they are constructed. And we'll work with RC Superior to address the overall parking demand. I did do this analysis based on information provided by the applicant. We wanted hour-by-hour breakdown of the various land uses. They did provide that, and I was able to put together this table, which combines the sports stable parking demand, the MOB parking demand, and Morgan Ranch's parking demand. So these are the periods that we had from the sports stable. For example, Monday through Thursday, their, their peak demand during the afternoon period is about 336 spaces. Their peak demand is really on Saturday from 12 to 3 at 469 spaces, and then even on Sunday, they had 459 spaces. By the way, in March of 2018, we conducted parking counts during a weekend, busy weekend. The most we counted for parking space of parking parked vehicles was about 220 vehicles at that point. So it seems like we're well under what these peak hour rates. I think at that point, we didn't have a restaurant, we didn't have some of the uses that are now in the sports stable. The MOB has reserved spaces in the parking garage, the MOB parking structure of 1991 spaces, so that may not be filled, but they have them all reserved. And then I estimated demand for the MOB during other time periods. Morgan Ranch submitted the demand at various time periods, so we see that the Monday through Thursday, we have a peak parking demand of almost 1,500, 1,497 parking spaces. So it took, what do we have out there now combined with what Morgan Ranch is going to provide? Sports stable lot, this is the south lot, has 110 spaces. The access between sports stable and MOB is 36 spaces. The MOB garage is 244 spaces, and on the sports stable on-street parking along Superior Drive on the east side is 51, and then Morgan Ranch has proposed to provide 167. So we have 1,508 spaces provided, which is pretty close to our peaked demand. So what the, so it looks like we're, we're kind of in the ballpark. We were concerned that, you know, we have a temporary lot out there, all that's going away, so are we going to be able to provide parking for the sports stable? So this looks like, looks like we're close. What we don't have here is a major event like a hockey tournament. We have some events coming up that could be big. We don't have, we have Chili Fest or other events, so it doesn't take into account those types of uses. But from, just looking at Morgan Ranch's, this particular FTP, it looks like they provide enough spaces for their own uses. We have to look at down the road, we probably will need another parking structure most likely on block five, and we probably need to look at special events, how we're going to provide that. We also have parks one and two coming in, we haven't determined the parking needs and how that's going to go on.
Do we have anticipated on some of the undeveloped lots to provide maybe some temporary, to relocate the temporary parking surplus lot to some of those undeveloped spots?
Yes, so they've considered, they've submitted a construction phasing plan. We'll be looking at that, and at each phase, we're going to ask, you know, we're, we need, may need some temporary parking. We may look at, you know, we have some on-street parking out there now. We could look at a temporary lot, and this is something we're going to have to work out as they come in, and as we see what the real impacts will be in terms of their construction. And that's something that the staff will do during, during all phases of their, of their construction.
Is there an expectation that the other planning areas might end up having to absorb some of the parking during events? Is that being, is that considered in this at all, or?
Not, not so far. We know, we know, you know, we have a couple more, you know, blocks out there, block five, and some of the other blocks that could be an office use, that could be hotel, that could be movie theaters, so there's, in terms of special events, I don't think we're going to have those things, although we, you know, at a hotel, you may have meetings, meeting rooms.
And even at the residential areas? I mean, there's room, there's some room to absorb some, I presume, but a little farther walk, but.
Right, in terms of, what was it?
Some of the existing new residential.
So to date, none of the residential uses have been allowed to count for on-street parking as part of their submittal. We've required their guest parking and their, and their individual residential parking to be onsite, so that street parking, I think that you're referencing, would be available for overflow.
But it's not, it's not?
It's not considered in any of this? This is all Planning Area Two, so that's Planning Area Three, correct.
One other question, Alex, before you move on, please. How much of this is public parking versus private parking? And has there been any?
Do you have that graphic, their parking table?
I can pull it up, but I don't have it up yet.
Page 12 or 13 in the narrative.
Where's the graphic that you're referencing? Is it in their parking analysis?
It's probably in your narrative. It's in the attachments.
It's in the attachments? Is this the table you're talking about?
No, it's the, here, right there, here we go. No, it's the, here, right there, here we go. Here's one table, um. So in terms of public parking, so we have on-street parking, uh, around the streets in this development, 191 spaces. And the, uh, parking garage is 301 spaces, I think, and about 199 are allocated to, uh, to public. Um, there's shared surface parking. So this is, uh, the big lot, about 64 spaces that's, uh, behind the retail area by Superior Drive. And then there's all the blocks nine, 10, 11, all have some shared parking on, on those blocks. So there are, there is well over 500 spaces that could be considered public.
So, um, given the numbers that you, um, showed earlier regarding total parking, um, how does that fit with what we have in our design, design guidelines versus, versus what our needs are for parking? Can you give me an idea of what that is? Is that number significantly less than what we really need for parking for this area?
You know, right now, we, we feel it's in, in balance for both what, what, uh, this FDP needs. And then I just showed you the combined that we're, we're close. It's not, we don't have a big excess of parking, but we have, we have pretty good balance for the, the day-to-day, week in, week out, you know, weekend parking. Uh, and, you know, it's not, we're not going to be overparked what we have at the Spirit Marketplace. We're not going to have a sea of asphalt sitting empty. We're going to have a vibrant, uh, area where there's, there's a lot of parked vehicles and people may have to, you know, drive around the street to, to find a parking space, but there's going to be plenty of parking when you need it. The only time there could be a problem is on, on big special events, like Chili Fest, where we, we have remote parking now. Um, and then we've always anticipated that a major hockey tournament, for example, would need to have some remote parking. But the general weekend, uh, busy time of day, there should be enough, enough parking. And this, these parking numbers, the demand, they, they include some, some excess because you're not going to have all the spaces full. There's going to be a cushion there of, uh, five or 10% empty so people don't have to search continuously for a space. So that, yeah, takes that into account as well. Um, I just want to summarize. We, the staff, uh, had some concerns about parking and traffic. And we developed, um, several proposed conditions for your consideration. And actually, these conditions will actually be what, what I think Planning Commission could recommend to the town board to include in the developer's agreement. Wouldn't be a condition of the, of your approval of the, of the FDP. So one, the first one is that parking audits shall be conducted every six months after the project, on, once the project limits of this PDA, P, FDP reach 50% occupancy based on floor area and continue until 90% occupancy occurs to verify the accuracy of parking generation rates and shared parking reductions. And the cost of these audits should be borne by the applicant. Second, uh, the applicant shall, shall develop and implement a parking signage and enforcement program approved by staff, which designates public, reserved residential and employee spaces and includes appropriate signing and enforcement strategies prior to issuance of certificate occupancy for the parking garage cited on Block Seven. And third, the applicant shall implement a travel management, travel demand management program based on the 2015 Superior Town Center TDM Plan prepared by Urban Trans with updates approved by staff. And this is to reduce auto travel and parking demand by residents, employees and visitors of downtown Superior. This program is to include an annual resident and employee travel survey to confirm alternative mode use. The TDM program and travel surveys shall be conducted per town direction once there is 50% occupancy of the project limits of this FDP based on floor area and continue for five years. So those are the conditions we, uh, recommend. And again, staff will be, uh, monitoring, um, parking during construction. And when the temporary parking lot goes along, we'll be looking for alternatives to, to provide parking for Sports Stable and other uses that are, that are using that, that lot right now.
Any questions for Alex?
Just one question. Going forward, as the development, uh, gets built out, the, the continued need for parking would continue to extend through the development, correct?
Yes.
Even for these large events and, you know, periodic, uh, Chili Fest and things like?
Right, I mean, what we, what we haven't experienced, well, Sports Stable has probably experienced some of them and some of them have been disasters, but we haven't had really a community-wide event that the town's sponsored that's been significant. We've had some runs, I, I think some fun runs that have originated there, but we haven't had the big community-wide event. And so we would, uh, you know, monitor those, evaluate those and figure out how to, how to sort of the parking needs. We do have plenty of parking in future. You know, we make it an office tenant out there that would have, you know, a lot of parking available on, on weekends. So we would hope to have, uh, you know, agreement with those types of uses. We have those uses, we could use them for community events. And we'll just, as those come in, we would want to make sure that, that some of their parking that's not being used on all periods can be used for these, these type of events.
Great. I think that's, you know, as, as our development goes forward, that becomes a very big issue. Parking seems kind of benign sometimes, but it's a very important issue to be able to get in and get out and get around the development easily. Uh, when folks, when you get tied up in a development or it's hard to get in, into, or hard to get out of, or hard to find parking in, people won't come back.
Right. And we have, we have some areas that are connected by bike, bike trails in the area. So we could take advantage of, of parking lots that aren't too far away that, like Louisville, that can be, uh, you know, we can rent it out for a weekend and let them just walk over. So there, there's areas that we can, we can use and we'll have to solve that as, as those events come forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, generally, I mean, I don't have, I think, anymore to add, but I agree with your conditions. And I think, I appreciate what you're trying to do, right? Nobody wants to overbuild parking. Nobody wants empty parking spaces. It's a waste of land. But at the same time, we need to balance, you know, getting access into this development. Where it gets tricky is these events. And so I think the requirement to monitor parking over time is good, to be flexible with, you know, providing additional parking as this develops. So, um, sounds like you all are heading in a good direction on this. I still have a lot of concerns related to the parking for the park, you know, and as well, we, you know, feel like we have a lot of big conversations around parking in the future. I don't know that it needs to happen right now.
Yeah, fortunately, uh, you know, we have worked out additional parking on Creek, on Creekview that has diagonal parking, more parking and the restaurant parking. So, um, but we'll have to see as that comes forth, what, what those parking needs are. And again, those are special events. The general day-to-day for that park is probably going to be, uh, provided, you know, close and by, by some parking areas that are close to the park. But a big event, you know, in the amphitheater, you know.
Yep.
Let's see.
Well, we're going to have a, a pretty decent increase in attendance, hopefully at these big events by adding the couple thousand people who are heading to downtown, which hopefully would walk. But, but the alternative modes of, the alternative mode connections into Rock Creek and, and all, I think are, are critical in making sure that those are, I mean, we just encourage people to use alternative modes to come down to the events.
Yes.
Alex, just one more question, please. Um, has staff identified any concerns or issues around pedestrian safety, ADA, um, issues?
No, we've, uh, you know, evaluated, they had to provide, uh, ADA routes throughout the development through all their, their ADA units. Um, there are some crossings. The, the only concern I have is up on Creekview where we have a, a crossing on that curve. Uh, so we'll have to make sure that's signed appropriately. But, you know, Main Street and most of the streets are very pedestrian-friendly. We've traffic calmed them. Uh, so I think we're going to, we're going to have, um, slow, slow traffic now. We've, we managed to slow the traffic down pretty, pretty good going through Main Street and other areas. So I think it's going to be a very good, comfortable pedestrian, friendly, uh, development.
Thank you.
Uh, I don't know whether or not Morgan Ranch has anything they want to add or clarify on the parking before we move on.
Good evening. Bill Jenks, uh, RC Superior in Morgan Ranch. Uh, really, we don't have anything, uh, really above and beyond what staff's provided. I just want to, from both RC Superior and Morgan Ranch standpoint, it's important to kind of bifurcate the issues as we're talking about project-wide downtown Superior parking and big events at the Sports Stable and that kind of thing. That's really an RC Superior issue, if anything, and related to the master plan. It shouldn't be tied to the discussion on this FDP. And the FDP is, you know, specifically for the Morgan Ranch uses, which do park themselves and fully meet the PD requirements and have done a shared parking analysis per the PD, um, requirement. So just to keep that in mind as we, as we talk about that. Um, other than that, obviously, we're, we're here to answer any questions and I'm sure we'll get into some other topics, but, uh, glad to be back.
Are you okay with the requests by staff?
Yes.
Do you have anything else?
I do.
Anything else about parking or Bill was here?
Okay, so basically, the rest of the presentation is just kind of formatted in, um, by land use variance request. And then we get into the, the P, the request for PC direction. So where we have a request that is going to be addressed, uh, through the PD amendment, I've just kind of struck through it. Uh, it's there for record-keeping purposes, so you see that it's not missed, but those things will be addressed, uh, either through the, the PD change or through that discussion, uh, in two weeks. So that gets you through really all of the land use, uh, issues. The one thing that wasn't mentioned in my memo, um, is that, that item C there, 1C, um, Block, uh, Seven has that new Lot Three. We should also incorporate that request into the, uh, the PD amendment to allow for a developable commercial lot in that location where it was previously shown as, um, part of Parcel K, uh, the downtown plaza. Uh, so moving on to the, the building orientation, uh, issues, um, this is, um, why we need a request for, uh, building orientation um, for the units on the north part of Block Six and Block, uh, Seven. So essentially, um, this building here, this building here, and this building here within Block Six orient either north-south internal to the block and not towards a public street. Uh, there is an allowance within, um, Planning Area Two to orient towards public, uh, Paseo. Um, and effectively, this is kind of that same issue that we, we touched on, uh, last week in terms of, uh, public spaces versus private spaces. Um, staff doesn't feel that, um, when it's privatized, uh, these spaces qualify as a Paseo. Um, and we've asked for additional, um, kind of reassurance from, uh, Morgan Ranch in terms of, um, the accessibility through this area. Um, they, again, as they, as they clarified last week, uh, aren't, aren't willing to add, uh, public access easements or create outlots as, as we've done elsewhere within the town center. Um, but they will provide additional notes, kind of restricting, um, I guess that's kind of a double restricting, but preventing them from restricting access um, to, to this area for the public. So it won't be gated. Um, um, I'm asking for it also not to be signed as, as private so that if you got off the bus in this location, you felt like you could walk through this area to get to the promenade, uh, even though it is private property. Similarly, if, uh, and this is the same kind of concern that we, we have and why we get the public access easements generally, um, is that, you know, if, if, you know, somebody's visiting one of these units, they, they can go through without it being, um, I guess, a question. So the porosity of the developments is important. The, the connectivity of the development is important. Um, and, you know, typically, we would have, you know, if this was dedicated as a, a public Paseo, I think we just said that these, these units were meeting the intent of, of the building orientation requirement. Um, the fact that it's not public is what we're really kind of getting into and asking for your guys' feedback on and, and whether or not you have any concerns about that. Um, I've added, you know, building separation here. This is at minimum 30 feet, uh, between these two units. And it's 40 feet between this unit and the unit to the south. Uh, and there's, you know, this isn't as, as concerning this one faces, uh, in terms of building separation. It faces this, um, area that's going to be public parking. Um, and, you know, it is in Ranch cap, you know, Morgan Ranch's interest to allow for public accessibility through this lot because they'll, they'll need it for their, um, retail units to the south. So I'm, I'm confident when, you know, Bill's clarified that this isn't going to be, it's private, but it's not going to be privatized, so to speak. Um, but it is different than what we've done and that's why it requires the exception. So that's why it's listed and that's why we've asked for kind of your feedback and just kind of. So basically tonight, I just want to make sure everyone's got their head around their, the variance request. If we have any questions, we can address them. If you have any concerns or if, you know, Morgan Ranch wants to say anything to clarify, they're welcome to on, on each and every topic. But, um, we're going to go through each of them. At least that's my intent until you guys get tired.
And do we, do we have a, yeah, do we? Do we, do we have a mechanism to, well, well, one, define it? And two, enforce that, you know, 10 years from now? I mean, I mean, do we, yeah, is there a way to do that? I guess I'm kind of like.
That's why I want to add it to the, either PD or the FDP notes that, um, prevent them from adding gates and prevent them from restricting access. So whether or not that signage, I mean, I think that a general note just saying that, you know, we are not going to restrict public access through these, through these areas, then, then I'd be comfortable with it. And I think that that's what they're willing.
I guess what makes me nervous is just looking at, you know, looking over here at the marketplace, uh, how it progressed over time, um, how it's, some things are not enforced, like lit signs facing this side of town. Maybe it's complaint-based, I don't know. But it's, um, and then signage that was, you know, agreed to be one way, somewhere along the line got changed to be allowed another way. And it's just hard to keep up with, even to be able, for anyone to go back and see that, hey, that's not okay. You're not allowed to do that, you're not allowed to do this, right? And so I'm, you know, curious, do we have a, I wish I knew the right words, but a good mechanism to, one, make sure that, that that's known 15 or 20 years from now and that, you know, all of a sudden, we don't get gates put up there, signs put up there and that flow stops because, you know, Bill's long gone and so has everybody else. And, you know, somebody decided it was private, so therefore I can do what I want, right?
Yeah, but I mean, it could be something that we consider for, as part of, possibly a part of the development agreement is also, you know, be enforceable through the, the code itself, if there's something that's applicable as well. So I mean, it could be, you know, potentially something we could look at for the development agreement.
Yeah, I'd just like to have a, a solid way to be able to make sure that's clear.
Yeah.
As we go forward, okay.
Yeah, and to, to clarify that, to some extent, you know, Stephen's original ask, putting an easement or some kind of a document on title would be the only way to really ensure forever that the town has that right to that land. From our perspective, it's an overreaching ask on the town's behalf. These are private blocks that have always been plotted as private blocks. And we have provided an additional public access easement here through the private block in excess of what was shown in the PD. And then obviously, the promenade and the plaza have always been shown as, as, um, you know, public access or actually dedicated right-of-way, um, to the Metro District and the PD. So you'll have true Metro District ownership of the plaza, the promenade, and a public access easement here that guarantee permanent on-title forever permeability of these blocks there, here, and in the, in the plaza. The bus stop, I believe, Jim, tell me if I'm right, is right here? Right here, right here. Um, for, for us, you know, this, this becomes a 200 by 200-foot private block to further bisect that and give the town additional ownership on top of what we've already given on. Um, it just becomes a big maintenance issue. This is private parking for the residential units. This whole project needs to operate as a commercial business, as a, as a apartment business. Um, and to carve that ownership up with additional public easements kind of crisscrossing this, these blocks is too much for us. And we're going to, you know, we're, we are going to have resident patios facing out here. There's going to be a lot of landscape maintenance and snow removal. It'll be a lot easier if this is all a single owner run by the apartment manager and can be maintained and operated and, and fixed and without having to have bifurcated ownership or, or, you know, or access rights or, or repair rights. So that's, that's generally our position is this needs to be, you know, maintained as a contiguous private block. Um, there won't be any gates here. Uh, so in, in practice, you know, people will walk where they want to walk. But, um, and we're, and we're not showing any gates or controls or anything. And we're happy to put a note that clarifies there are no gates in these areas. But as far as permanent title-type easements, um, we're opposed to that.
So what I'm hearing is really, you can do what you want with those whenever you want?
I mean, subject to town... Subject to town code and everything else, yes, it's private property.
Can, I'm sorry, I don't remember all our rules. We can ask questions, though, and kind of comment on this generally.
Yeah, this isn't related to PD, yeah, we can, yes.
Can you speak more to just the design of the, I don't remember if it's six or seven, the block on the left? As far as how you think this meets the requirements in that six, the design guidelines for orienting to a street? You know, you've got that street frontage bisected by the driveway cuts, which I understand are needed, but I have a hard time, and I know I commented this on the concept plan level, I just, I have a hard time with this block design generally. So can you speak to maybe why you think this meets the design guidelines for street orientation?
Yeah, so the design guidelines for Planning Area Two, and I don't have it completely memorized, so Stephen, if you have it up, we can read it. But it basically says, in Planning Area Two, the front doors shall orient to either a street or a passeo. I don't think the word "public" is in there. To me, this is a passeo, whether it's public or private. It's a green space that goes through the middle of the block that is pedestrian-oriented. And so these units front that passeo, which then are easily accessible from the street, which explicitly meets the language of the design guidelines.
From a design perspective, and I hate designing on the fly, but I'm wondering, you know, you've got two access points out to Marshall. I really feel like this is really kind of bisecting the Marshall frontage that you don't connect out to Creekview Way. Couldn't you provide kind of your through circulation and have a better street frontage on the Marshall side that way?
That was another option we looked at, was closing this side and having this connect out to Creekview.
Yeah, because you're already open right there. I mean, all you're doing is just not, I mean, you lose a few parking spaces.
Yeah, you lose more parking by doing that, which is public parking and it's used for the park and everything else. We wanted to keep that parking there. And also, it does just kind of make some sense. If you're coming to this neighborhood, you know you're coming off of Marshall. You know you're exiting onto Marshall rather than having one egress here and one here. There is, you know, there's plenty of separation between these access drives and there are front doors of units facing out to Marshall. So those will feel like the front of the building, even though it's technically the side of the building. From a solar orientation standpoint, these work better, having that long face facing south and collecting sunlight for all the units. We, you know, we did a lot of study on putting the buildings ten different ways for this block and this is what we, after looking at all the different considerations, came up with as the best option.
I also have a concern about this variance because it seems to me that the design guideline requirement through five, seven, or right-of-way or a passeo actually increases the amount of landscaping or the amount of passeo that there has to be in these blocks. And I think that'd be more attractive for the tenants and more attractive for the town. And I'm particularly concerned if this becomes a model for the remaining blocks two, five, and eight. I wouldn't like something that we're doing here to become a standard for those other blocks if they come in as residential developments either.
Is somebody else? All right, thank you.
I'll just stay here if you don't mind.
Sure.
You have any other questions or comments on this particular topic or?
I've got one, Mr. Jenks. So was there, you were discussing about not having any gates or obstacles or fences in block six or seven. Would you be willing to put that in writing and agree to that as a part of the?
Yeah, we need to, you know, obviously, there will be like gates on the trash enclosures. I mean, there will be...
Recycling, the bike blocks.
We need to come up with very specific language that says... Yeah, the dog park will have a gate around it, obviously. So we'll, but yes, to the context, we're talking about it here. We're not, like, basically, we're not going to put a gate across this, the block access through there. We can come up with specific language with staff and just put...
But if there's nothing that says they can't...
That's what I'm asking for, is to put that in writing in the...
Well, he offered to put it, no, that's why I was checking with Dan to see if there's a way to... And that's all fine and dandy until twelve years go by and Bill and half the people that are in this room are gone, right? I promise you, it just won't be, it won't be the same. Well, if it's in writing, we're somewhere that it's meaningful, right? I mean, it's got to be meaningful, it's got to carry teeth.
Mr. Jenks's point, I mean, people are going to walk where they're going to walk when they get off the bus.
Not if he gates it.
Right, if there's no fences or obstacles, they're going to filter through block six and seven and no one's going to know they're block six and seven in twenty years from now. But if fences and obstacles go up...
Well, so what we're willing, what we're willing to do...
That's what I want to make sure is that it stays open, that the people can go where they want.
And that's what I do too, but I don't want his word and something buried inside of a note on the side of an FDP that's sitting in a file that nobody's going to look at, think to look at, know to look at, or consider to look at when somebody comes to the planning department and says, well, why is there a fence across that now? And they'll all know.
Well, that's an...
It's not in the land use code, it's not anywhere. It's buried in some document from 2019 that nobody has a clue where it's at, right? So that's why, I think that's part of it. I mean, I'm sort of feeling like why we sort of designed this the way we've been, you know, why we set this up with the design guidelines, that this is dedicated to the town and blah, blah, blah. And I get, I get the idea that this is private, but I'm trying to find out if there's something in between that, you know, we can make this binding.
I'm trying to figure that out as well, because, I mean, for their plan to keep it private property, that's what they need to do.
So we can provide that direction, you know, over the next two weeks to see what comes back and... I think, I think there are points across, we don't want it to be close.
We're on the same page.
And what we're, for our part, what we are willing to do is put the note on the FDP that says we're not going to put gates up there. That would basically, until any future redevelopment of this in fifty or a hundred years comes along with a new FDP, that'll govern this site from a planning perspective. The problem with putting something like an easement or something on title that permanently forbids that is on a hundred years, when this does get redeveloped into something else, now you've got this archaic easement that goes right through the middle of the site. Now you can't do anything with it, right?
Well, it would have to be designed differently, I mean, I, truly, I mean, if we're going to require there to be public access streets through there, they can't do this design. I mean, I get that, but...
And from a design standpoint, just kind of thinking about it, you know, if you do get off the bus here, you're probably going either to the park or to Main Street. You know, we have provided this additional easement here. If you need to get into the plaza and you want a shortcut, I'm just saying, even if this did redevelop as an office building a hundred years from now or whatever, you've still got plenty of permeability and access through the site just because, you know, you don't have it direct across from that point, I don't think is a design problem, really.
I agree, I think, given its current design, not that many people are going to be cutting through there. I think depending on what develops on the opposite block, right, that could change, right? You put somebody's primary entrance right there, they're trying to get somewhere, maybe that changes. I don't have a lot of heartburn about not putting the easement on. I think the note on the FDP, regulated through the development agreement, just to double-check, is probably sufficient. My just, my concerns stem more around the design.
So there was a mention of the gate on the dog park. Is the dog park for residents only or is that for town? It's obviously within the private property of that, I just wanted to...
As currently contemplated, it's within the private property and for residents, we're not going to lock the gate, so... But from an insurance standpoint and everything else, it's a private amenity for the residents.
I was just thinking, I mean, it's in such a public spot along the outer edge of that property that if it was going to be private, it might be better suited to be somewhere else, but I feel like, yeah.
Next topic?
Continue on.
So it's the same, same criteria, building orientation, just on different blocks. So let's start on the right there, where we're looking at. So this is that same building and this is the north, so this is all block, the south side of block six. This is that wrap parking structure. There's residential uses on that north side. And then there's, this is where there's that forty feet of separation between the block that we saw here or the building that we saw here and the building just to the south, which is that parking garage. So it's the same, same request, just happens to also apply to this building. And in this case, this is, you know, I think these are thirty-nine feet, if I'm remembering correctly. And this building averages around fifty-five feet in height, but forty feet of separation. And this is where Bill was mentioning, they do dedicate an eight-foot public access easement just north of this building to get you from Marshall Way to the promenade and to the plaza area. And then moving over to block nine, this is that, those six Remington units that are sited internally and do not front a public street or passeo. So they are requiring the exception as well. This is the green space that's kind of proposed in front of it. So it's not too different than what you see in certain areas, but this is definitely a more public realm parking area to the north. And then just north of there is the mixed-use building that's proposed to front Main Street on the north edge of block nine. So those are the requests or the variances that are needed for the other two, I guess, that are addressed here. This one's fairly similar to what we just discussed, except it does have the public access easement. And this one is just, as I see it, a straight, straight variance request for internal units located within that block. Do you have questions on that before we move on?
My, I kind of have a question, I guess, which would benefit from your commission guidance is, you know, how do we define passeo? Like, those, the units on block eleven do face this green space, which has pedestrian access through it.
I don't feel like it means a passeo. I feel like a passeo, you know, is providing a through connection, kind of from someplace to someplace. This is like...
Well, this does have sidewalks that connect from this street through here to this street.
Yeah, I think that's pushing it. That's my opinion.
I'm happy to call it a variance if we support the variance. I could also see that that's a passeo. It's, I mean, it's landscaped pedestrian access, providing access through the block.
It fronts an alley. I mean, that's, you know, with the green space in between.
It fronts a shared parking...
It fronts a parking lot, I don't think that...
I think there's more to a passeo than a parking lot with a bit of green space next to it.
Yeah, I don't feel like that meets the intent of it. I also wonder about just the feel of those internal units. You know, they're going to be kind of sandwiched. They don't front anything other than a little bit of a green space. You know, they're the back, you know, the back door of the commercial and where's their trash enclosures and surface areas, right? And it's just parking. I just don't, I don't feel like the experience of those units is going to be that awesome.
So just to, I'd speak to that for a second. I think it's actually going to be very nice that this is a pretty wide area. This, the architecture around these buildings is great on all four sides. You're going to have apartment units on these buildings facing this way, just like you have apartments facing this way. You're going to have trees and landscaping through here. This is going to be an attractive, you know, parking amenity like the front of any retail space. So it's going to feel like sort of a secondary Main Street. It's not the back of house of anything. You know, I understand how it looks like that on plan, but I really do think it's going to feel quite a bit better than that because we wouldn't want to put homes where it's going to be feeling like a commercial backdoor. I mean, no one's going to want to buy those, right? So I actually think that they're going to be very attractive. And because of this separation is so big, this is a pretty large green space compared to a lot of the other blocks that I actually think they're going to be pretty attractive.
Why don't we look at it again on the 3D video that covers it? Yeah.
So it kind of feels like no man's land? And my question then would be, were there alternatives explored to do with that, you know, plot of land there? Because I'm looking at it, it's enclosed, you know, it's, there are parking lots and apartment buildings surrounding it. And based on what we're seeing there, I don't know what else you could do with that other than just turn the whole thing into a park. And I know that that's not...
Yeah, which, you know, this is the garage doors of all these units and that really would feel like the back of house in that case. And what this does is it turns garage to garage and makes this block of townhomes really four-sided architecture. So while, when you're in this shared parking amenity, you feel like you're not in the back of house. Whereas if this wasn't here, it would feel a little awkward because you'd have a bunch of garage doors facing, facing that interior of the block and it'd be a big, big empty space. And so I think these actually contribute to the, to the design of that block quite a bit. Because you'll have nice, attractive front doors and landscaping and stoops and all that.
Okay, I would like to look at that when we get to the...
Okay.
The video.
I haven't watched the video yet, so I can't promise anything. We'll see when we get there. So the next one is to do with, or the next few, I think, are to do with residential typologies. So Morgan Ranch variance request relies on residential typologies, kind of generally outlined here. Where the requests for their walk-up units on block six and seven are not compliant with the typology description, those exceptions, these exceptions are necessary. So high-density attached flats were what was chosen as what they were aiming for. Those units were envisioned to be six-unit buildings. Morgan Ranch is proposing buildings with both eighteen and twenty-six units, so quite a bit larger than the six units that fit within this typology. And then they only contemplated one and two bedroom units, where Morgan Ranch is proposing studios as well as three-bedroom units. And then lastly, the range of the unit sizes also requires an exception. So that unit size range established twelve-hundred-and-fifty to sixteen-hundred square foot units and the units within this, within these blocks are between four-hundred-and-sixteen and eleven-hundred-and-sixty-two. Primarily, there is one that falls within that range and that's for the three-bedroom unit and those are just a handful of those three-bedroom units. So they need an exception for the sizes of their units as well. So town, the town has issued exception requests for square footage ranges in the past and generally acknowledges that the specificity established in the PD for all of the residential typologies has proved somewhat limiting. We've had this conversation before. Those, those were targets and we're not, we're not getting products that fit squarely within any of those residential typologies generally. So for instance, there is no, there is no unit within the entire residential typologies that's less than nine-hundred square feet in size. So, you know, they didn't have anything to choose from that was any more compatible than what they're, what they're picking to aim for with this one. So they need all of these variance requests for this typology and staff's just, you know, wanting to make sure everyone understands it and asking or answering any questions that you guys may have.
I don't have any concerns on the unit size ranges. I think it's, studios are more popular and a good idea. We need different housing types, so...
Yeah, I feel like we need smaller housing types and a little better pricing, hopefully.
I lived in a slightly less than a thousand-square-foot house for nearly twenty years and that was fine, but I do have concerns about four-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot apartments. That is only slightly larger than a shipping container. I don't think, I mean, what, I mean, the size ranges and the approved styles were fairly clearly laid out in the design guidelines. What drove this change?
So this is a response to the market. You know, we work with a market consultant called The Concord Group, who does these market studies nationwide. And they look at demand drivers for a certain area and who's renting what and how well each type of unit is renting. And they give us a, what, you know, optimal mix of unit sizes and numbers. And that's basically what we follow to ensure that the project can lease effectively across the market. Anecdotally, we have also toured D-Lo and some of the other competitive newer apartment projects, which generally are leasing those smaller studios really, really well. It's for people who have a job in Boulder but can't afford more than fifteen-hundred bucks a month in rent or less than that, and there's literally no other option. And so they come here, have a nice product, nice amenities, and don't need, because probably don't have family yet, don't have kids yet, don't need that much space. Also, anecdotally, my wife and I did live in a four-hundred-and-seventy-foot condo for four years with a dog. And it was great, loved it. It was very comfortable, you know. Now that we have two kids and another dog, it's probably not as feasible, but for the right person, it is a great solution and it saves a lot of money on your, on your monthly rent, which is a big, big consideration for a lot of people.
How many of these units are anticipated?
What's our mix, do you have a mix of the...
Roughly?
Eighty-five.
Yeah, out of the three-hundred-and-eighty.
And you, I mean, are these going to be long-term rentals? Could they, you know, they wouldn't be short-term or...
We haven't really gotten into any discussion of that at all, but the general idea is to just lease it as a typical twelve-month or there'll be probably six-month options for higher monthly rents, but we haven't gotten into much of that yet with our...
Do we have requirements around that or no?
Not that I'm aware of, no. Any other comments? All right.
Was there a question about the three bedrooms too? We didn't have. No, I mean, that was variance as well, right?
It's a variance as well, yeah. So they're going up, they're going down. Because they only had one and two bedroom units defined within this typology.
Okay.
So moving on to a different residential typology, and this is for that south portion of Block Six. These units will be wrapped around the proposed parking structure. So that piece, we basically just didn't anticipate apartments mixed in with a parking structure. There was some, one of the PD typologies discusses a mid-block parking structure for an apartment type of use, but this is actually a wrapped structure. So it, in and of itself, is kind of requiring the exception. These units also require the same exceptions we just discussed in terms of floor area ranges. And staff, you know, generally doesn't have any concerns with this design. And we were encouraging of them, including a parking structure within this proposal. So this is, we think, a creative solution to, to that need. And we'd rather have a parking structure that's wrapped than a parking structure that stands alone and that you, that you see from all three or four sides. But those exceptions that are required are again outlined here, so. If you didn't have too much on the last one, you may not have much on this one. But if you have any questions on it, we're happy to go into it.
I agree that a wrapped structure is much better than just a standalone structure.
Any concerns around the balconies?
Oh, we get into that here in a little bit with architecture stuff. But that's another kind of point to this and I guess that's, you know, a good, a good place to bring it up. So, and we'll get into just the, kind of the facade and articulation of this north building facade and the west. They're fairly flat and they don't have any of those projecting balconies. So those are elements that we'll look at, I guess, when we get to the architecture.
Okay.
And then even the flex apartments above retail, which are as true as, as any of their residential typologies, because they are apartments above retail, Blocks Nine through Eleven do also require exceptions, again, for the unit ranges. And then, so that's, that's this kind of illustration here and that's what's discussed on, on 3C. And then again, this is the one that actually shared, said that there was supposed to be a shared parking structure for that typology, which we don't have. Some of these units, all of these units actually are going to be given that a parking, a surface parking space on the lot behind it. So one parking space is proposed for each of the, I think this, this block has thirty-six units on it. And this one, I believe, is Block Nine. Maybe this one's Block Ten. But then moving down to the row homes, the row home product requires well-defined front entries. They do require an exception for their floor area, again, here. And this is just exceeding what is required or was established for the row home product. And then staff is going to continue to work with them on whether or not they're meeting their front porch, kind of well-defined front entry. I had a conversation with them before the meeting that suggests that maybe the illustrations aren't, and they can kind of bring up, they're here, they can talk about it directly. But whether or not we're meeting the, the front porch requirement. They do have a very generous, and you can't quite see in this illustration, but a second level deck for outdoor amenities. But the intent of, the, the requirement is to have an aggregate kind of porch, because that's where you interact with the public that's walking by. When you're at a level above them, you're not at the same level of interaction. So that's the, the one other kind of concern we had with this. And then just to foreshadow, I guess, the other comment that we had on the, the row homes was that we only had the one color palette and they've since come back with four different color schemes proposed for the sixty-four units. And that was in your, your packet tonight. So I don't know if you want to get into any of that now or have them come up later and discuss their porches or...
That was fine. Yeah, that was fine. Yeah, go for it.
So Steve, I don't know if you want to come up? And then do you have a, is that in your, in your presentation you're going to bring up?
It is, yeah. So the row homes that we're doing here to kind of just bring everybody back into time, they're...
Oh, sorry, Damon. Just introduce yourself, please.
Steve Knowles, Remington Homes.
Thank you.
So the row homes that we are proposing here on Nine, Ten, Eleven are substantially the same floor plan on the ones that we built on Block Thirteen and are just starting to build on Block Twenty-five. And so this, yeah, this right here, so this is actually the same footprint. So the One-O-Nine is a new, is a new floor plan that is just, it's really the same floor plan, but we had a little bit more width on these buildings. So we used it up, we, we developed just a little bit larger plan. And the One-O-Nine is the one that requires the exception for the square footage underneath the row home design. We did not need that exception on the square footage on the One-O-Three. This front porch here and this front porch here, these are the identical porches that were, the size of the porch that were, we constructed on Block Thirteen and constructed on Block Twenty-five. And really, the definition of a porch is a covered entry, if you look it up on Wikipedia or one of those. So it definitely meets that criteria on those. And as Stephen said, there's a large-sized deck that is on the second floor, which is where the living space is. So we felt that that was a much better area to help accommodate outdoor living space for the people that are living on those. And that's illustrated right here. You can see that we've wrapped the porches with the stone. So they're, they're noticeable and inviting area to where people can enter the house. So we believe that that does meet the typology requirement for the front porch. And then outside of the square footage criteria, there are no other exceptions that we're asking for on these.
I would also just point out, because I think people, because you drive it more often, are pretty familiar with the Wonderland Homes that face promenade. The porches are very similar to this on those Wonderland Homes and those feel very inviting and open and, and nice. So between the extra little roof element, the improved stone, particle surrounds and that recessed entry, I do think that these, in my opinion, meet that design guideline criteria for entries. You can see the little roof, roof element here. And this rendering is a little dark, but you can maybe zoom in a little bit more, but...
We have a couple. No, I guess we didn't get enough.
Yeah, this is it. Yes, you can see the stone with the, you know, sconce light and improved roofing, upgraded roofing area.
Any comments?
If that rendering was rotated a little bit more, you'd actually see the door and see the depth of that a little bit better.
Is there a step into that building? Anything that kind of separates it from ground level?
Well, it depends on, so yes, no. On the accessible units, there's no step. You know, we're required to have that zero entry going into there. You know, there is a defined area that's defining that as the porch. So on, you know, I'd have to go back and look, but on a certain number of the units, you know, there's, it's the zero, zero entrance going in. But then depending on the grading of the units, some of them, or, you know, fifty percent plus will be have, you know, will have a couple steps going up, up onto the porch and then step into the unit.
So I want to thank you for providing a zero-entry porch, if you will. So thank you for that.
Stephen, can you remind me or how the design guidelines differ with like the existing Remington or Wonderland product versus this one? Like what does the language say that's different regarding these front porches?
So the typology for the... Sorry, I passed it already. So the typology for the row home is D and it says, "This product type is envisioned as a semi-detached row home. The ground floor will hold the street edge and provide a welcoming first impression. Each unit will provide an individual front door and porch, as well as approximately two-hundred-and-fifty square feet of ground floor home office, which has been incorporated into the design. In some cases, upper floors will detach, providing three individual vertical unit articulations. This unit configuration allows for windows, porches, balconies to be introduced on the upper floors of each unit. In other cases, upper floors may remain attached and present a denser urban edge. Primary building massing will be limited to three stories. Primary massing will be fifteen percent of the floor area for the fourth floor, should they ask for it." And then it just says roof terraces and balconies are allowed, which is included in their design. And then in terms of the townhouse, I'll just kind of try to find whether or not there's anything.
I guess I'm looking more specifically related to kind of that ground floor.
Yeah, and this one does...
So it's a porch, not a balcony?
This one does talk about that porch needing to be prominent, which the townhome doesn't. So that's, that is the, the difference. And we are reviewing it against the typology that they've stated it is, so.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I, I understand what y'all are trying to do. I disagree with the, kind of the claim that the, kind of that Wonderland porch feels open to me when I, you know, drive by and walk by. I feel like it's kind of dark and closed off, the way it kind of wraps around. And it honestly, like a lot of them, just feels like it collects leaves and they don't use those front entrances a lot. So I would encourage you to kind of work with staff to open that up a little more. I don't know that it needs to be, you know, an entirely... No, I get the deck up on the second floor. I think as a, if I lived there, I like that, I would probably want to be kind of up above the street a little bit. But I, I don't think those porches are open in a manner that...
Yeah, I wonder, just looking at the end units and on the Plan One-O-Nine, it is a wider unit. Is there a way to possibly just do, I, I love the second level balcony. But on the end units, is there a way to, especially on the One-O-Nines, to encroach a little more on the living space on the bottom and provide a, you know, almost like a corner element that's a, that's a sitting porch just for your end units? Maybe not necessarily the center units. It would be more difficult, but I think if we could include something on the end units, make it a little more inviting. I would love to have an end unit that has both a sitting area on the, the lower level and the upper level, or at least more of a defined entry on that lower level.
So probably unfortunately, just the way the plans lay out, Stephen, I think it might, might be best to illustrate if you go back to just the elevation drawing is, is the, is the, the door itself. So when you really look at the architecture, this is, this really ends up being the stair shaft. And so the front door is in front, is in front of the stair shaft. And the, the, essentially the, the home office that's on the main level is on the corner. And what we really struggle with is on these depths of these units, in order to get, you know, a usable office, and a lot of these will put the accessible bathroom on the main level and then the garage on back of it. So, you know, that's why this element a lot of times ends up coming out. We would end up having to sacrifice, you know, either, you know, the accessible bathroom on those units if we wanted to kind of get the, the porch coming across the front. So when you look at the floor plans, you really end up with, your choice, your choice would be either the study or, or the porch, I think. And that's, you know, that's why we've kind of gone to a smaller, kind of the more inviting porch on this way. Because, you know, this end of the house really ends up becoming the livable space of the house. And I think if you look at the side elevation, Stephen, I think I put it in, it's on maybe on the next slide. Maybe back one. So, and we've done that kind of on our decks, where the decks will wrap around the corners on the ends. And, you know, we, we created this kind of as more of the rappable feature using kind of a, you know, the tower, I'd call it a tower design that we got going there to help kind of wrap the architecture coming around the corner. On that, so. That's, that's kind of our limiting, unfortunately, I think that's our limiting factor.
I guess another question might be, excuse me, how do you get differentiation between the entrances? I mean, that, I think that may be one of the bigger concerns there, is that all of the entrances look the same and you know, is there a way to maybe change some of the articulation there?
Well, these buildings do and they maybe don't really show it in here. They do have quite a bit of articulation when you start looking at the deck that gets pulled back and the front porch on the front, Stephen, I think if we look at the front elevation again, you know, we do end up with quite a bit of articulation in these. And we were really, because we were trying to fall underneath the row home design, you know, we were trying to keep somewhat of a consistency between these, you know, on the definition of the row homes. If you look at them, they're kind of more of a consistent look between each building. You know, we did do variation, you know, and we've done this on our, our different blocks that we've done. We've done variation with a lot of the products. But again, the design will definitely kind of be similar, going from one to the next.
Stucco allowed at the ground floor on these residential units in the design guidelines or maybe we can...
There's not a, a limitation. It just talks about enhancing them and having that, you know, like a grounding base with the stone and certain elements. And in general, like the, I think the entrances are identified with that stone. But they are all identified the same way. So the individual unit definition, you know, maybe could be enhanced. I don't know whether or not there's an opportunity to, to do some of these, you know, a little differently. They do have that column there in order to kind of just broaden that and maybe look, but it looks like this is kind of overhanging, you know, into, not, not their setback, or probably into their setback, but certainly not over the, over the sidewalk or anything like that. So I don't know how much space that they have. We can, we can look at it a little bit more if you guys feel like more needs to be done. And maybe we can look at, you know, what enhancements on those building sides could be done. But I do feel like they do have a foresighted architectural project or a product. The, the concern I had was, you know, whether or not the intent of a, a front porch. I mean, the front porch to me isn't just where you come in, come and go out of your building. It's somewhere you can actually sit and hang out and that's what activates the space. And in this case, I think that they're transferring that activation to the second level, so. Whether or not we feel that that's, and I think that that's kind of alluded to in the, the typology description as well, but it's not in lieu of a front porch, it's in addition to, so.
Do you have concerns about the stucco at the ground floor level from a durability perspective?
This is, no, we do, we do that quite a bit. Stephen, would you mind going back to the, the, just the elevation picture, the black and white? Yeah. So this is, yeah, this is the staccato board that we've been using. We used it on Block Twenty-five. And, and, or, excuse me, Block Thirteen, we used it. It's actually the hardy board.
Oh, this is like...
Correct. No, and so we've had, we've had very, we've had good success with it. We feel that it's act, actually, I like it quite a bit because we struggle with this on a consistent basis of just finding different materials and textures to put on, put on the houses. And the staccato board has really helped broaden our, our range, our color palettes and our textures that we can use. So I like it. I like using it, so.
I was a little surprised by the color scheme, particularly the dark gray. I mean, in a place where the temperature sometimes gets over a hundred degrees in the summer, I think that wall is, those walls are going to get very hot in the sunshine. I don't know if any of that heat will leak through into the buildings themselves, but it would be... I'm, I'm just surprised you'd pick such a dark color for an area which is, which gets such high temperatures.
I, I think the best way I can answer that is the colors are, you know, were selected by essentially color experts in the field right now as far as what's trendy and popular. You see a lot of, maybe even go further in that, you see a lot of really dark, black roofs right now, which are certainly, get a lot more heat than even the sidewall would. And it's... And it's-
That's environmentally very unfriendly too.
Yep, it's, but it's definitely what's, I think, trending. I think you see a lot of the dark grays going around, around here right now. And that's, that's why those colors are selected, just trying to kind of keep it, you know, into the more popular schemes and the modern schemes. I think a lot of the modern architecture right now is showing a lot of the dark grays, everything. Maybe Bill could speak more to that as he's not-
I'll, I'll clarify, do, you know, staff encouraged Remington to come up with a different color scheme. Cause you have this comparable color scheme on, you know, a comparable product, I guess, on block 25 and 13 to the south. So as we transitioned to the core area downtown, we were looking for something different that didn't look like, you know, some of the rest of the development further south. And I, I think that they achieved that. I haven't looked too carefully at their, you know, beyond their initial color scheme that they've, they've given us. But I'm glad to see that we have, you know, additional options for those 64 units. And we'll just work to see, you know, to provide that level of the detail that we've gotten on other blocks, you know, where we actually clarify that, you know, color scheme four is going to go here. And, and two's going to go here, or we at least, you know, ensure that there is a mix in, in one way or another. We haven't gotten to that step yet, so that still needs to be done.
And I think when we were looking at the 3D model and going through the drive-through, and then we had them stop and look at the shade sliding, that a lot of these buildings will not be taking direct sunlight for extended periods of time. Quite a few of them that seem like as the daylight moves through, that they'll be shadowed by other buildings.
One, this is going down a little bit of a rabbit hole, but dark, dark walls in this context are actually really nice. For one, on this type of wall, you're not going to really see any difference in the temperature inside because of the color of the wall on the outside. There's too much thermal insulation between the drywall and the, and the stucco on the outside. Even if you had like a concrete wall or something like that that did transfer heat a little bit better, they actually work really well. Because in the summer, the sun's really high, it's beating down on the roof and not hitting those walls, so you don't get that heat transfer. In the winter, when the sun's lower, it is hitting more of the wall, and that wall can start to act as sort of a, it's called a drone wall. And it stores some of the energy from the sun and releases it at night in the winter when it's freezing cold. So from an environmental standpoint, it actually is a nice idea here because their typical framed walls, walls with insulation is not really going to have any impact. And it was done just to provide a more contemporary, modern feel on these, on these homes that are supposed to get more urban, more hip, closer to the main street. And have a little bit more contemporary, you know, contrasting colors and architecture.
So no major concerns about the porches on them? Want to push that at all, or is that a-
I'd like to see them a little more open if it, to meet the design guidelines. I don't know that I'm gonna fall on my sword over it, but I don't know that there, I think the way that, just that enclosure kind of wraps those edges, it doesn't, doesn't feel very open, my opinion.
Alright, okay, moving on to the next one. We touched on this last week, it's just their height variance. So this is showing the, the south elevation of the southwest side of building 601. So this is the portion of, whoops. This is the portion of the, that roof highlighted in yellow that requires the height variance for 72 feet. And it's for their pool building on the, on the roof deck. You guys saw that in Three Dimensions last week and-
I thought I asked last week, then I thought, I was told it was in, did it change from last week?
What?
That part that's sticking up, I thought, I thought that was still within the height limit.
No, there's, they, no, there is a height exception for, so it's a 65 foot height limit on block six, and they need 72 feet to have that pool building.
How far back from the roof edge is that?
Thirty, yeah.
Thirty-five feet from here.
And we can look at that in that model either later, if it's visible or, or next week.
I was gonna say, we, we looked at that over the flyover that you showed us last week. And from Waterford and the edge of Rock Creek there, the edge of Waterford.
Yeah, it's not visible, yeah.
Blends into the rest of downtown, it, it's nothing that-
Yeah, I just thought I asked, I, yeah, I thought I asked if we had a height, but I just missed it, okay.
Just for this one, yeah, it's been in the memo and-
That's fine.
Yeah, so. And then signage, so there is a request for some wall signage on a couple of their residential units located on block seven. So that would be a variance as well because it's not contemplated within the PD or the design guidelines.
Lit, lit or not?
It's not specified yet, so whether, I mean, I guess, one, do we have any appetite for it? And if we do, then we can talk about what conditions or what type of sign we'd allow. And I don't know, Bill wants to clarify what you had in mind or-
Yeah, what, what are the signs for and what's in?
Yeah, and we haven't, we haven't designed the signs yet, but they will be, you know, very upscale. It, it's intended to portray the, why you would want to live here, right? And, and they're at main entrances, well, one of them is at the main entrance to, to the project. And so they're, they're announcing this project as well as downtown Superior. You know, the, the one that we're proposing is actually on block six on the corner of Marshall and Superior. So as you come across Marshall Road into downtown Superior, you'll have the tower on your left side. And to us, makes a lot of sense to have some sort of entry monumentation there that everyone can see. And, and can also see potentially from the bridge and a little bit further back. And then the other place we're proposing it, that, that's important is that northeast corner, which potentially might have some freeway visibility. At the end of the day, it's, you know, it's probably too small for anyone to really read. We're not going to light it, it's not going to be an internally illuminated channel letter, six foot tall Costco sign or anything. It's going to be a very tasteful, you know, probably a, like a routed aluminum with some external like gooseneck lighting or something like that, or potentially up, uplighting. The, the idea is for it to look nice and upscale and just have some identification for the, for the project and for the, for the center.
Now, I've been hearing so many complaints from Louisville about the lighting over there, so. Minimal, from Louisville looking into this, into this area, the lighting is just, it's just, oh, the garage is, I mean, the garage is lit, people on their back porch staring at the lights in that garage till two, you know, they're on till two in the morning.
The Floyd sign-
That's why we fought the signs, yeah, you know, so, I mean-
Which I think is there, right, I don't think we had any-
Yeah, I, I'm not, yeah, I'm not disagreeing.
Still get the phone calls.
Yeah, it's just, it, I mean, I'm just trying to be thoughtful of the, of the lighting. I mean, tasteful, small, very, I mean, I'm just telling you, I'm not a fan of lighting, much lighting, it's, it's already getting, it's a big area for people to look at.
From a site plan standpoint, you know, I, I don't know if we have a, Stephen, do you have a, a full site plan we can flip to real fast of the entire PD? This is a ways further back from Louisville and from the freeway. And then the, the MOB garage is, so you can see that the garage is over here, right up against the freeway.
Right.
And facing into this, this, I guess, is that a neighborhood back there? Whereas we're talking about this corner that's, you know, much further, generally speaking, from, from the freeway than that garage is. And we're just talking about a, it's probably a, what are we showing, a 10 or 15 foot wide by four foot tall sign, not a, you know, parking garage. And that Floyd sign has to be six foot tall letters in there, and it's internally illuminated.
Yeah, but it's just going to be up four stories, five stories, so, I mean, it's going to be visible over there, there's little doubt, so, anyway.
It's a three stories.
And that's three stories there?
For both of their, or all of their apartment types within these blocks. And I guess the only context I'd give you is that the, you know, in terms of square footage, what's allowed on the MOB, I believe, is 35 square feet in size. And so, I mean, just for the sake of scale and what's comparable to what we allow for an office use, I probably wouldn't recommend us going any, any bigger than that. And then whether, I mean, if it's internally illuminated, which Bill's not suggesting that it is, it has a, has a greater impact than if it's downlit or separately lit. So it could be more akin to what we approve for the superior medical center signs.
Yeah, those downlit ones look much better, yeah.
Goose, gooseneck lighting or whatever that actually signs them, so. That's the kind of feedback. So whereas I'm asking for us to punt on, or your, your latitude to punt on certain signs for their retail. So they've shown some signs on their restaurant use on block four. We don't have a tenant yet, so I, I always feel like it's kind of premature to do any evaluation of that because it's just kind of wasting our time. But I do think that the PD generally, I mean, this is an exception where we haven't contemplated wall signs for residential use. We do have a pretty robust sign package, and if, you know, Bill agrees, I'd rather just kind of look at that as a, when, when we actually have a tenant come in. And I think that the allowances within the design guidelines are sufficient to address those, those needs, so.
Yeah, and on that point, just so you know, we are working on a comprehensive sign program that'll control, from a private standpoint, and it'll be put in all of our leases, the signage with all of our commercial tenants. Let's spell out not only sizes but sign types and put some additional restrictions on tenant signs from just what's in, in town code. And that's from our experience as a retail owner. We like signs to, to look as good as they can and not have any box signs or rotating signs or any of that nonsense. So you'll see that coming through as a separate process in the next couple of months also. I'm fine, any tenant right now is going to need a subsequent sign permit anyway, so I'm fine with however you want to, however you want to process.
Right, they'll need it and they need to, they need to meet the design guidelines. And I think the design guidelines are thorough for retail signs, so. But to my point about this is that this actually would require an exception at the FDP level in order to allow the, the residential signs. So it sounds like you guys are at least tolerant of the request. And then it sounds like we need some specificity on it being downlit and being, or externally lit and being limited in size to, you know, 35 or 40 square feet. Something comparable to what we have on the, the medical office building across the street, so.
Yeah, I think I'm open to signage. I think branding is part of an apartment project or a residential project. You see that all over in downtown Denver. I think my initial preference is though, from an orientation perspective, it should orient to the downtown. It should not, the intent of the signage shouldn't be to catch, catch the drivers on US 36. So, you know, above the first floor level, downlit, high quality, I think, I don't have any problem with. I think once you start getting those upper signs intended to grab 36, then I think it's a different type of signage that I don't know that you need. Or we haven't demonstrated, I guess, that we would need 36 oriented signs for that to be successful.
So we'll look and I guess try to just find some, get the specificity of what the actual rendering that they've generated actually reflects in terms of signs size. And then clarify the lighting and then come back. And if they are agreeable to lowering the, the sign height, then great. If not, then we'll ask for it where it's at, but have the specificity for you guys to be able to respond to it.
Yeah, I would like, on one point, I would like to keep them on the third floor, just so you can see them as you're coming across Marshall Road Bridge. And if you're riding your bike on, on the bikeway there, I don't think having them on the third floor is gonna, A, I think it'll look better really because there's a higher parapet at that third floor. So there's a bigger sign band for that sign to fit in as opposed to trying to squeeze it in somewhere on the first floor. And just even from visibility from within the park or the, or the bike path or other places within the project, I think the third floor does a better job. If we're, if we do a 35 foot, square foot sign that's externally illuminated, it's not going to be a freeway grabbing sign. You might be able to barely read it from the freeway if you're looking for it. But, you know, by nature of what that is, it's just not going to be like a big blinding freeway sign, so.
So as far as it being lighted then, I know that when we discussed the signage for the parking deck, that one of the comments was, because we talked about, you know, having it turned off at 10:00 PM. And the comment, if I remember correctly, was it's a 24/7, you know, medical center that really needs to have it illuminated 24/7. And so that was kind of the agreement, whereas I don't see this being a needed, you know, 24/7 lighted sign. So if we could keep that in mind as well.
Yeah, if you want to put restrictions, say it's off between 10 and 6:00, yeah, 10 and, after 10, that's fine, I think. You okay with that? We were just talking about those apartment signs on the apartment. We are gonna, just so you know, coming down the bike, we are gonna ask for a freeway monument that'll have room for commercial tenant signs on it, which would be, you know, more commercially oriented, totally different deal. That'll be part of that sign program that we can talk about later.
Okay. Okay, I think we were on slide 36, so that discussed that one. Getting into setbacks, I think it was Commissioner Stewart that may have asked about setbacks last week. But there are some setback variances that are required. As I've interpreted it, I, I feel like if you're going to give an exception for building orientation for the lots, for the buildings we discussed earlier, that inherently kind of addresses the setback. Or involves a setback exception, so I didn't bring that back up in terms of, you know, for the sake of double jeopardy and all that type of stuff. But for, for these lots, I, or for these units, buildings, I, I feel like there is an exception. So, and it really is, it's really just based off of the curvature of the street. So, you know, without this building being oriented to follow the actual curve of Crete Way, it's not going to sit between 0 and 15 feet. It has, I think, just over 17 feet in this location. So those are the type of setback variances that I've, I've identified. And then just because they strictly don't meet the, the definition, but there's no concern that staff has over them. And then in terms of what's, this is just an example of a building, this is the building on block 11. They have a fairly uniform setback for most of their frontage. We've asked for that not to be right at the property line, even though the PD kind of encourages that. But we want the articulation and to not, you know, have things encroaching over a property line. So we've asked them to push that back, and they have. And then they do have these kind of, in, you know, additional setbacks on their building corners to allow for additional cafe space. So that's where they, and that is all, it's not listed as a setback exception because this is built into the PD to have that kind of, up to 50% of the facade have an exception from the zero setback requirement in order to allow for those type of amenities like cafes. So just, just to clarify the setback stuff. Any questions on, on those? Okay. And then we're getting into the promenade width, which they responded to, the applicant responded to last week as well. So the PD is shown here, it requires a 45 foot width. What they're proposing is essentially the space between the yellow as being 37 feet originally when we first had the application. So the staff recommendation that you had was based off of a 20, 28 foot width. They're asking for 37 feet, and that's really to have this private space opportunities for patios and whatnot on their apartments that are above the promenade. So that's, that's that request, it has gone up from the 28 feet to, to 37 feet. So staff will update our memos for you guys' next meeting accordingly. I don't know whether or not you have, the, the concern we had in general was just kind of this split or the division between public and private space. So essentially, you know, four of this, four feet on each side of that 45 foot width. The enclosure's the same because the building separation's pretty comparable, it's over 45 feet. But it is private space versus public space, so. You guys are all clear on that exception? Okay. Block length, we touched on earlier, and really this is, I think, kind of the, the hammer if, if there is a concern about connectivity. So block length is, you know, set to not exceed 300 feet. We discussed this in detail with the toll application, we required a wider lane, sidewalk, you know, that both the, the lane or the alley and the sidewalk were publicly accessible in order to physically split blocks 18 and 19 from one another. This is, this is different, and I think we've already kind of discussed this at length already. But, you know, the public access easement is, within block six is just north of building 6-01, that's the wrapped garage. That's a six foot wide dedicated easement, there is no outlawed. So we do have the pedestrian connectivity, and that would, is what, you know, Morgan Ranch is effectively asking, you know, to, to satisfy this requirement. We're still saying that there's a variance that needs to be granted because we don't see it as a placebo, and we don't see it as an actual physical division of the block. And there's a few others, you know, without, throughout that are slightly larger. So even block seven is exceeding, you know, 300 feet on this promenade side, the, the west side. And I think that there's, I don't have them all measured out, but there's a few that are actually exceeding the 300 feet still. So there are exceptions to be, to be granted on, on those, or that need to be granted on those. But I think we've kind of discussed that already, everyone's got their head around those? Okay, and then we're moving- And then we're moving on to the request for PC direction, the first one was on block four, I have it written as lot four, but it's block four, sorry, so whether or not we were discussing this private versus public, and whether or not there's really public parking there, it's similar to the discussion we had when, you know, Tesla came in, the private, private site is gonna want to reserve their, their parking for their private use and assure that they, they have it when they need it, that's the same argument that, you know, Morgan Ranch is kind of putting forward, so I just want everyone to understand that that parking lot area isn't gonna be used for, you know, park users, or at least, you know, not gonna be reserved for park users, I mean, there may be some opportunities to do that, but really, when you have a private entity that owns and owns a lot, they're gonna wanna have their control in order to enforce upon it, and if they give us an easement, they don't have that control, so that's Morgan Ranch's argument, I just want everyone to understand that, you know, it's not parking, it's not a drop-off area, it's a, it's a private, private lot, and it will be used, you know, primarily for the restaurant use that goes on there. Anything you wanna add on that?
Nah, I mean, we'll just, can we look at a plan real fast, just, um...
It sounds like there's no direction to be provided then, if this is a private lot.
Well, originally it was teed up like that, so I'm not skipping over anything, we, we're not getting an easement, we typically get easements, their position is the same as what we heard with Tesla, you know, like, and, and the discussion and understanding, I guess, I have with Tesla, is Tesla's not gonna necessarily restrict people from parking there on the weekends when they're not using it, you know, if they want, you know, they're not gonna necessarily tell anybody, but they want that right, if there is a problem where they have, you know, hundreds of cars there, they get left there for parking right or some other use, you know, so that they need that assurance, so that's the same type of position I believe Morgan Ranch is taking on this.
Yeah, that's right, and this, you know, this, so this restaurant pad, I think we all want to be successfully leased to somebody to activate that whole park and everything, any commercial tenant is gonna say, I need at least seven spaces per thousand, if we're showing fifty-five hundred square feet of building here, that works out to about forty-four spaces, so that's our intention, just to make this a leasable and sellable pad for a restaurant user.
Seven, what are you parking that at, seven, what's your...
I think it's just above seven.
Just above seven.
Yeah, there is public parking on the right-of-way, there's diagonal parking, probably about another forty spaces or so along Main Street here, and then there is this additional parking lot here that's being incorporated into the design for the park, which will be public right-of-way for park users, so, you know, in that regard, I think we're kind of meeting the best intent of everybody's direction.
So then, direction provided, we're done with one?
Yeah, I don't think, I just wanna make sure we're going through everything, sorry.
I just wanna check these off if they're done.
Okay, we will discuss two later, because that's civic space, that's a land use, three is the pedestrian promenade, which we've already discussed in terms of width, so I'll update my staff memo accordingly to kind of check these off as well, staff is requesting direction on the general notes for signage, and that's what I kind of hinted at earlier, that we don't, we'll just have them remove the sign bands, because they're, at least for the restaurant use, they're in locations and sizes that I don't know that will ultimately make sense, so, rather than have something that we'll likely have to change in the future, we'll just address it in the future. If you guys wanna apply any conditions or consider any conditions in terms of hours or whatever, or relate to any of those things that you want, you know, imposed, that, that lot on block four is only thirty-two feet tall, that building is only thirty-two feet tall, but, you know, we probably have them limited to business hours as well, a restaurant, obviously, we might stay open till, you know, twelve o'clock at night or something later, but those lights would go off within half an hour of that, and that's actually in the design guidelines as well, so, that's already regulated.
Where are the general notes, Stephen?
Where are the what?
The general notes, I mean, if I wanted to look at the general notes to see what they were, where would I go find them?
What general notes are you talking about?
The ones regarding signage requirements.
Oh, they're in the design guidelines?
It's the design guidelines.
So, for five, that's highlighted here, so we'll kind of go through that, in terms of, well, it's not going down, in terms of their architectural variety within their apartment complexes, on the north part of block six and north part of block seven, just wanna make sure everyone's clear that there's two color schemes proposed, color scheme two is the, kind of, the more orange brick dominated one, and color scheme one's the darker gray brick, so layouts A and B are proposed for color scheme one, that would be these two units, and then these four units along the promenade, and then color scheme two, the orange, kind of on the east here, and then the yellow on the west, generally fairly mixed, it will give us, it will result in color scheme one being the dominant, or the only color scheme on the promenade, so that's just what I wanted to make sure everyone was either supportive of, or if they had, you know, this isn't an exception, so this is, that's, that's why this falls into, you know, what is PC's direction or opinion on, on, on this issue, do you feel like that color scheme is fine, you know, and I guess, even from the applicant, maybe they wanna explain why they chose one color scheme versus two, and how that feels, you know, for the actual public going through there.
Yeah, I'd love to hear that, I mean, because I'm more of a variety person than consistency person.
Yeah, we did look at it a couple of different ways, from a design perspective, you know, I, I like the idea of having, as you're looking at it from, from coming in, you know, to the project off of Marshall, and coming down Marshall, coming on Creteview, you are gonna see that variety of the red brick on the corners, and then the black brick or the gray brick, in the, in the middle, you know, mid-block here, and there's some sort of symmetry to that, there's some kind of design logic of the corners are held by this traditional red brick, and the mid-block, you know, introduces this more contemporary gray brick. We looked at potentially having, you know, these two buildings, or these two buildings, or these two buildings, the red brick instead of the black, my personal opinion is, is as you're coming down promenade, it's more successful and more attractive to have a consistent building on both sides all the way down, which would be this, this, the gray brick with the white, which is kind of the more contemporary treatment taking you to the park, because there's only four buildings, or only two buildings in length as you're walking down here, to have one of them black and one of them red, to me, would feel more artificial than having them all be nice and consistent and symmetrical down, down the walkway, but if someone feels, or if you as a group feel strongly a different direction, you know, that, that, we can, to some extent, I think, play with which building is which color, if you feel strongly that we didn't choose the right option, but we did look at a couple of different ways, and we thought that this, this was the best, most attractive option. Terry, you had to add to that, I should let my architect speak for...
My only, my only question, and you answered it, is that it's, it is actually a brick, a red brick, I was worried that it was in orange stucco like the Element Hotel, I wanted to make sure.
That's, the Element Hotel is actually, it's actually a wood, a faux wood panel, but I agree, the color was...
It's not walnut.
Not exactly what we...
I'm gonna rely on the architects in the room to...
Terry Willis with KTGI, so I agree with Bill, we did look at it a variety of ways, how do you, without making a checkerboard, how do you put variety in here, but we, we decided ultimately that the promenade was consistent because of what happens on each end of the promenade, because that's, that's where the variety is, and where the, where the, the energy is at each end, with the, with the block six and the civic building and the entrance to the, to the apartment leasing and all that, making really a big statement on the park, or I should say, on the, on the plaza, and then at the other end, overlooking the park, is the, is the restaurant building that is supposed to be a very iconic building, sitting, you know, kind of floating on the edge of the park, so, between those two, we decided to let that be a more neutral backdrop to that, to those two anchors.
Yeah, I don't have any issue with that, I think it's, it's fine.
All right, the next three requests, items six and eight, are also related to the architectural designs of the apartments on the promenade, the design guidelines have specific requirements for building entrances, ground floor elevations being enhanced and visually distinct from upper floors, in general, the PD envisioned the promenade to be a publicly active space that was sighted adjacent to active uses, the proposed residential apartments are not inherently active in comparison to more public uses like commercial space, or even different residential uses that include formal porches to each unit, given the proposed use and the limited amount of patios proposed, the architecture plays an even more critical role in activating this corridor, so, staff just wanted to make sure that we're looking at this closely and understanding it correctly in terms of what's required in the PD, so, basically, are enough enhancements included, are the patio spaces sufficient, I just want everyone to make sure that they understand what's actually being proposed, kind of through this area, so this is a 3D rendering of the promenade, this is the, you know, the front elevation of three of those, so three of them are identical, they have two, it's kind of hard to see in this elevation, but they have, is it two or three, I think it's just two public entrances, and then a couple of private entrances, one's kind of on this corner, the other one's adjacent to one of the public entrances, and then the public entrances are really just limited to covered, kind of, like, just an awning that enhances, or kind of clarifies that that is the entrance, or the shared entrance to the apartment building, so it's just a different, I mean, it is an apartment proposal along the promenade, but in terms of activating the space, I guess I had questions on whether, on how it does that, and then, you know, on a, on a building of this size, where we have anywhere between eighteen and twenty-six units within a, within a unit, we have three or four actual entrances that somewhat function as porches, but not the same way you would if you had a traditional brownstone or something like that, so.
Can you zoom in on the oblique one?
This one?
Yeah, make that one bigger.
We can zoom in on it all. Let's get this up here.
Picture in the photo, actually accurate representation of what that building would look like.
This is a two-dimensional version of what that building will look like, I mean, I think that the architect might wanna, or Bill can respond to the general design for these units, if you look down, Chase's 3D kind of rendering, it's also a fairly flat, you know, facade, not, not as much building articulation as we get in some of the other designs, so, I just wanna make sure everyone's understanding what's being proposed, and if they have any additional questions or concerns, that they're related now.
Yeah, let me, let me jump in, so, so this, this is Chase's model, these buildings don't have any material articulation on them, so it's not gonna look at all like this in real life, this is a flat 2D elevation that doesn't, it's just rendered too dark and doesn't have any shadows or relief shown on it, so I would say that's not really what it's gonna look like either, this is the most accurate representation of what that, what that building is in real life, this is the red brick version, the other one would just be dark gray bricks in place of the red, it's gonna have the same articulation in and out and, and contrast that this rendering shows, what none of these really do that good a job of showing, is that all of these ground floor units on these buildings actually do have private porch entries directly off of the pedestrian way into the unit, which we were, it's unusual, and we were very specific about that with our designers, in order to, to facilitate that ground floor activation, normally on these apartment buildings, you would just have windows at the ground floor, and there'd be no activation, we said, no, we want that activation, we want public use to be kind of flowing in and out of these, these units, so the, these, it's kind of hard to tell in this rendering, but, but these two doors are the public, are the communal entrances to the building, so those serve a stairwell which goes up through the building, and then serves all these units on the upper floors, these, these doors next to them with the sort of little bit darker framed door built in here and here, and there's also one on the end of this building, are private unit entrances, so that goes straight into someone's, I guess, living room probably, and those, those each have a roughly eight by, I think, eight by ten-ish?
Six by ten.
Six by ten patio off of them, that'll have landscaping around them, some patio furniture, potentially tables and umbrellas and chairs, and you can have a glass of wine out there, and that, to us, is really what is gonna activate all of the right-of-way frontages of these buildings, is people enjoying those private outdoor spaces that come right off of their living room, like a, like a traditional sort of front door stoop.
So, I have a love-hate relationship with this concept, I love how you just explained it, right, that there's gonna be table and chairs on the patio with an umbrella, and you're out there drinking wine, but in reality, there's gonna be people who throw their bicycles out there, and they, and litter boxes for their cats so they can let them out, and, you know, and, I've just seen it a lot, that, that, you know, you've got this great concept, and it's right on a main, you know, pedestrian area that we're trying to activate, and then all of a sudden, you know, every other patio is just cluttered with bicycles hanging from the, you know, railings and everything, and so I just wanna make sure that, that in your leases, that that is all addressed, and that it is, you know, definitely monitored, and...
That's exactly what I was gonna speak to, I mean, you know, just like a lot of these issues, it's in both of our best interests to have this thing looking attractive and not, not be kitty litter boxes and trash and bikes out there, I've seen that also, where it's not regulated well enough, this especially because it's pedestrian and right-of-way, it certainly will be, it'll be written into all the leases, we do have about twice as much bike storage in the project as is required in the PD, and we're gonna say, if you have a bike, you put it in one of these designated bike parking, we have indoor rooms, and we have outdoor facilities, so you're not gonna be able to keep your bike on your, on your balcony, so it really will be intended, and we'll police it through the leases and the property management, to be active, you know, furniture and kind of what you wanna be seeing out there.
Then I love it.
Good evening, Bill Vittek with Dick's Studio, the other thing, and I think that's a very good point, Mr. Stewart, about that love-hate relationship, the other thing we do have here, and I don't know, Stephen, if you could, Mr. Reese, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong... Sorry, I'm sorry, I apologize, Stephen, could you pull up that landscape section we had there, the other thing we have to, to that point, Mr. Reese, is the, about nine feet of landscape that is a buffer between the patios and the public promenade itself, it was, and I think that is meant to be, you know, decorative, it's not meant to be a full hedge, so it's blocking, you know, views, but it's supposed to be enough of a lower barrier that allows visual contact and visual interaction, but it's enough of a, of a, of a screen to address the issues of the person that might have their bike out there and those types of things, so, in this, it's hard to see, I don't know the scale, we've got lower button right here, but there's, there is about eight to nine feet of landscape right in these areas right here, that provide that conditions for you.
I'm having a hard time seeing the detail.
Do you wanna try...
Do we blow up that one, or do you have an exhibit, maybe, that we can look at?
It's close, you weigh in on that.
Yeah, I'm more concerned, I think, with, yeah, let's do all of them, but yeah, that's the architecture.
So, there's the additional landscape buffer right here.
You're gonna need to speak into a mic, even if you're up there, okay?
Okay, so what I was just referring to is the landscape buffer right here on both sides, that provides that additional screening, so it's not too high, but it does allow that social interaction across the promenade, and then the patio spaces sit behind those, and as, you know, the buildings notch in and out, they, you know, they kind of step back and forth, it's not just a straight line.
Yeah, he's got birds, that's awesome. There are balcony areas in each building, in each unit, on the upper levels, on the brown level, it's the same, that same space, but it extends beyond the balcony above.
Which elevation?
This is actually not the promenade.
Right, yeah.
This would be a typical one, this one is along the view.
Does that promenade elevation look like that same elevation, though, with the stoops? They're essentially the same?
The difference is, the promenade is flatter, and along the street sides, we're more constrained by the, you know, by the elevation stairs.
But doesn't the promenade one have black, I mean, I think there's a choice of black brick or brown brick?
Promenade has all the gray bricks, this is not promenade buildings, but it's, but they're all similar, similar organization.
I mean, where's black, I mean, I have to say, I thought it looked incredibly institutional, and it didn't look like a very friendly institution.
Can we get you guys to move back to the podium, so that everyone can, and we can actually probably get a video too? actually probably get a video too? Could you guys move back to the podium?
The gray one.
You guys can talk to him from, from the podium.
Do you have an illustration of the gray building? The gray brick?
There is one in the, in the FTP document we can, we can bring up.
Yeah, it's in, it's in the document. I did not bring that. We actually have a dozen boards that will be at our next meeting, but I decided not to bring twelve, just bring three, one of each, of each building type.
And then I queued up the 3D model, cause I don't know whether or not he'll fly through the promenade, but I figured it might be a good time to do it.
Yeah, that would actually be good.
If you guys don't want the noise, I can turn it off too. Otherwise, you're gonna hear some birds.
Birds chirping. Oh, that still looks better.
And, and just keep in mind again that these buildings don't have any of the material or color articulation, so in terms of architecture, they're not very true to life, but massing, they are.
A lot of people missing.
A lot of cars and people missing.
So this is the parking garage on block six, the west side of it.
Yeah, this is Marshall Road heading north towards the park. You have the ends of those units that we looked at, there's the Paseo that we just passed, driveway entrance for the garages, and then this is Creekview Way, that's the block four restaurant on your left there. Diagonal part, public parking on the right, the turf field which is just on your left, and then here we go down the pedestrian promenade, heading south from Creekview towards the plaza.
So are those porches open to the promenade or they, are they protected? They're open?
They're, they're open and as Bill just described, there, there is a low planting, like a hedge between the public area and the private porch area.
Okay, so they're, they could walk off the porch into the promenade, okay?
So this is about mid, mid-block, that's the...
Yeah, you can kind of see some of the patio elements that are incorporated here.
And then you're coming up on the civic space on your right, that's, that, that mass would be the town's civic space, and the plaza is just off the screen to the left here. You have the public access through the building there to the parking garage. And then here's the plaza area, the turf area in the middle of the plaza with the stage on the left and retail in the background on block seven.
So that's all turf, not natural?
Correct. This would be where that Pop Jet fountain happens to the left here along with some movable seating and that sort of cafe open area. Here's the, the signature building on the corner of the plaza with the decor and, and kind of seating area around that. And now we're on Superior Drive.
Can you pause a minute? Could you just speak to the artificial turf versus natural grass and the enjoyment of one over the other, which I think is natural grass over turf?
Sure.
And are, and are you open to natural turf over artificial?
There you go, I was looking for that.
All right, bring the example, see.
We have a sample.
Some really good stuff.
Yeah. Yeah. So again, Bill Vittek, Dick's Studio, that is a sample of a artificial turf, synthetic turf, that is specifically designed for high-traffic areas. As I recall, we, first, our first meeting with you back in April, there was a preference towards the synthetic turf. We certainly like the use of the synthetic turf better from the durability standpoint, especially if you're envisioning lots of community activities and events here. We like it also from the standpoint of low water use and being ecologically more responsible. So, you know, we do think it's, it's, it's more and more of a, of a trend to see this type of material used in these kind of type of civic spaces.
Dog with dog waste and all that, I mean, how does it handle that over?
Yeah, so it has an underdrain system and a, like a filter layer below, it's very porous. If you took that material and, you know, took a bottle of water and dumped it through there, it would, it would seep right through it. So in terms of dog waste, if there is problems with that, if there are problems with that, we also will have hose bibs in the planters immediately adjacent or in this, like a valve box that there could be spot spray down with the hose bib. And, and so that, that's how we've dealt with that in other situations. And it will also have a, even though we tend not to use it very frequently, but we've also found that installing a irrigation system that can potentially cool this down if need be, or just provide a general level of cleaning, you know, every, you know, once every two weeks or something like that would also be installed as part of the design.
What's the lifespan durability on this after, I mean, how fast is it gonna get matted from a, after a big event?
Yeah, Ryan, what's their warranty on this, remember? Was it...
I believe the warranty's fifteen years at the shortest.
Yeah, if you could repeat that in the microphone.
Yeah, the warranty's fifteen years. And on this new one, I wanna, I wanna say it might be a little bit longer than that, but it's, it, you probably would have replaced the lawn maybe, you know, four times within that timeframe just given the use of it, so.
Anecdotally, just to speak to an example, we had a project in Mountain View, California that had a pretty similar sized green space that we originally did as natural turf. And there you obviously don't have the additional considerations of snow and drainage from snow and everything. But there we actually ended up replacing it with turf about eight months in. It was an area that had very similar programming, active movie nights on Thursdays in the summer and, you know, concerts and that kind of a thing, surrounded by a mixed-use project with, with commercial and residential above. And it just got so much traffic that the, the normal turf just couldn't keep up. The question about dogs is also a good one. The natural turf actually handles dog waste terribly. It dies immediately and you have the brown spots everywhere and it's impossible to keep up with from a maintenance standpoint. Obviously, we'll encourage people to keep their dogs off of this to some extent and use either the dog park or the natural turf, the natural lawns in the, in the actual park. But of course, there's always gonna be some, some amount of that, and the answer is that this handles it much better than natural grass does in all respects. And then, you know, through, through the winter, obviously after a snow or, or in the winter seasons, this is gonna dry off much faster than natural turf that has the puddling and all those issues, so you'll be able to use this. The idea is to use this year-round for, for events and try to keep it as active as possible.
And remind me again, you're not dedicating this to the town, right? This is private property. You guys, so this won't become a town obligation?
No, this gets dedicated to the metro district.
Okay.
So it's just, just like all of our sort of outlaw tracks and everything in the Planning Area Three, it will be public via metro district ownership, but not the town's obligation to maintain, it's the metro districts.
Okay, and keep going.
So right in front of the retail spaces on block seven, with the plaza to your left, this is the pedestrian pass-through to that parking area. You got your red brick crescent shape that we've talked about that leads you straight to the, the entrance of the civic space.
Is there potential patio off those units? No? Yes?
Yeah, we'll encourage that. Stage to the right, this is that diagonal pathway that cuts through the, through the plaza. This would be that area that has that rock, that climbing rock and the, and the swings. And then here we are on promenade, coming south on promenade, past the mixed-use buildings, this would be the Remington Townhomes that you see. That gives you an idea of what the middle of block looks like. There are those gorgeous welcoming front porches.
Is that by definition?
So now we're on, I think, Old Rail.
Old Railway, yeah.
Old Railway. Peeking into the middle of block again, and then here we are back on Marshall between blocks nine and ten. Still on Old Railway heading west.
And Chase has designed all these to show their fourth floor kind of terrace options, so some of them may not have that option.
So this is actually going into the middle of block nine, which I think is something you wanted to look at, which is convenient. So here's that triangular green space in front of those townhomes in the middle of the block with the parking around it. That's the front of those townhomes that face the middle of that block. And then you see the mixed-use building there. And here we are back on Marshall heading north, so you have the block six RAP building there in the foreground. You see the setback from the retail spaces below to the residential above and those large patios on top of the retail.
So I'm gonna stop it real quick, cause this is one of the next topics that we're gonna discuss in terms of the, these two facades of the, of the RAP building. So again, this is gonna be more or less ground floor uses associated with the parking garage. There are some, I don't know if they're faux windows or if you're actually gonna get, get to see through them into the parking garage, this is the entrance into the parking garage, but within this kind of, you know, base elevation, there are some internal rooms for storage of trash for both uses, the, the retail uses along Main Street as well as the apartment uses. So that's where those kind of services will be located. I think there's a bike garage right on this facade as well, but the question really is just kind of the, the articulation of the walls. There are, this is the, the element that's supposed to have the projecting balconies that doesn't, particularly on this north elevation, we have ground floor, two fourth-floor apartments and a fairly, you know, limited articulation along that wall as well. And then about forty feet of separation between this five-story building and the three-story apartments to the north, so.
Is that the height, that's the height variance on that building, right?
It's right in here, yeah, where Bill's pointing. And then there are tower elements that are allowed to exceed, so I don't know that these would require the, the variance, but that is pedestrian access and elevator access, so stair, enclosed stairwell and elevator access to get to the top level of the garage.
There's block four again.
Parking on that top level? There is parking on the top level.
Okay. Right over the sports table.
The parking is on the, the west side and the, the pool and, uh, pool building is on the east side of that roof structure.
Yeah, I think generally I'm fine with the Main Street elevation. I like how you've pulled that second floor back. I think that's a good element, you have that really grounded pedestrian streetscape on Main. I've, I'm, I understand you've got a lot of kind of utility purposes on the Marshall Street side, but I don't feel like that's, I feel like we, there needs to be more to provide some articulation and ornamentation on that Marshall Street frontage. I mean, that's a primary entrance to our Main Street, you know, once that Marshall Road Bridge is constructed, I think that's really gonna be the front door.
Rendering of that side?
We don't have a rendering from you of that side. I mean, we have the building elevation, but we don't have a rendering.
The FTP we don't have? I thought there was one rendering of that corner, looking at the retail that goes right...
On the retail, there is.
Yeah, I think the retail side's fine, I think it's that Marshall Street side.
I think it shows that edge too. Cause I actually, I, so there's a couple, I wanna talk about that edge, cause it's an important thing and we are requesting a variance for that, which I, you know, I think is warrants a little bit of discussion here. So the, as, as Stephen is pulling that up, so the, the reason that we don't have a lot of room to, to extend the ground floor on that, on that first lot, on the, on the west face, ten feet like we are on the south face, is, is just a function of the block length?
Yeah, I don't know that you need to extend it out. I think you could meet that in other ways. I don't know that you have to do the same treatment as you're doing on the Main Street side.
Well, so the, so the variance is, is actually, so that the, the design guidelines have language that the fourth floor has to step back ten feet from the third floor, which is the variance we're requesting. The, just so you can understand, is there plan view of this block? Can we look at it real fast?
You're looking for that elevation or the perspective rendering?
Well, I guess...
That's it here, that's the only, and it's mostly on Main, so you can kind of see.
So in, in plan view though, can you just like zoom in?
Oh, we can go back to a plan sheet if you want.
Yeah, sure. So the garage on this, let's see, this is, yeah, this is right block. So the garage on this block goes from basically this line to, to this line. The garage has a minimum length in order to meet the necessary slope requirements. If it got shorter, those slopes would get steeper and it wouldn't work anymore. So the garage kind of is what it is, we can't really play with it too much. And as you can see, due to the block length only being probably fifty feet longer than the garage needs to be, we don't have the room on this side to do any major stepping back because there's just not, there's, there's only thirty feet between the garage and the, and the frontage. To step back ten feet, you'd end up with unusable space here, or you'd have to expose the garage on the fourth level, which not only would look terrible, but would also cut off the, the circulation that wraps the garage on that fourth level. So architecturally, it was just, it was a problem we couldn't solve and, and we decided because it's facing that, that west face, to just go ahead and ask for the variance to make this work and be able to include the garage in this block. You know, we, we've talked, some of the, some of Stephen's recommendation was to potentially look at changing the base material on that elevation, if you wanna go back to the elevation now, to a darker color. We are using a, a different material there, it's like a, a really nice ribbed fiber cement board that's gonna give it a really kind of high-class feel along this pedestrian scale here, and then it transitions to, to stucco above, which I actually think is a great treatment, I think it's gonna look awesome in, in real life and it, and it kind of, it grounds the building, it lets this white kind of, you know, airy feeling come all the way down to the ground in one location as opposed to the, the retail treatment that we have on the south where you have this big darker mass that, that kind of signifies the retail. We are looking up and doing like a big mural here, by the way, which I think is really fun and is gonna provide a lot of activation for Main Street. But to me, I, I like that, that the white on these, on these, on this building facade is the sort of primary color and is allowed to come to the ground even though this is a upgraded base material. We, we certainly could, if everyone agrees that you just absolutely want that to be dark gray, fine.
I don't know about color, I just feel like from the quality of the architectural design on this particular elevation, I feel like it's lacking.
What about art of some sort?
I mean, maybe, right, maybe you could get there through some additional art, you know, a mural or design on, you know, more than just, I like, once you get to that kind of front fifty feet, I think you're fine. I just think the amount of stucco on this particular elevation is a lot. These windows aren't necessarily, you know, you're not just getting, this elevation I think has me, has me concerned.
I, I mean, I think that there's opportunities here for, I mean, a, a better kind of band here in order to, and it's a big building, so we don't have large elements, I don't think, and we have no roofline articulation on this facade at all, we have a, a straight, you know, so I would just like as much enhancement as we can, especially if we're trying to work, I mean, if it can't be depth or articulation, then vertical enhancement, you know, to actually, you know, change and then, you know, maybe have a thicker band here, some sort of termination point that's more prominent for handsome articulation for the actual roofline, I think would go a long way to, to helping this building. And I guess the other just kind of concern is, you know, this gets built and it's gonna be visible from McCaslin until you build something on block five. And, you know, what we have on block five, we don't know yet, so how much this actually gets shielded from view or kind of, you know, buffered because it's, you know, there's development to the west, and when that happens, we don't know yet, so it's also something I just wanna be mindful of.
So above the roof band, there's like a slightly darker gray mid, I mean, it covers almost the whole midsection of the building. Is that like a, the wall for the parking?
Yeah, I'm guessing that's the paraple wall of the parking garage, is that right there? Yeah, this lower wall you're talking about?
Yeah. I think, Stephen, you're right. If, I mean, if any of the exterior walls, you know, you wind up going a little more vertical to create some, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Even a mixture of articulations, yeah, just, just some design work up there. Is that enough direction? Got the idea.
Can you go back to that rendering real fast? Let's see it in there probably.
The rendering, where was the rendering? Oops, I think I just passed it. Here?
Yes, zoom in on that little. Yes, you can, you can see there what Terry's talking about where the, you know, the parapet wall comes along, jogs back, comes along, jogs back. And so from this angle and from, you know, anything in real life, you are gonna see that vertical articulation of the balcony cover being, providing a lower roof element and then popping up to these, to these white elements that come up from the ground as sort of tower elements in between. So, you know, I think.
This height's consistent, I mean, this is a subtle break, I guess. But this, this height's consistent throughout, right?
Yeah, and that's quite honestly very on purpose. I mean, a lot of the design inspiration behind this building was to provide a more contemporary, more modern architectural feel for this building, which is the main amenity space and sort of the hub of the entire residential project. And so it is, you know, providing a little more modern, a little more sleek, a little less traditional facade than the walk-up buildings, which was on purpose. It's not, it's not supposed to be it.
Can we get you guys to provide a better rendering of this elevation? Like, and the north elevation prior to our next meeting so that we can take it closer?
Yeah, and I just think that amount of stucco just doesn't lend a high-quality feel, in my opinion. If this is what you want, if this is what you're saying it is, and this is really like, you know, the heart of kind of the core here. There, yeah.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner, the other commissioners, that as you come in on Marshall Road, it's a major thoroughfare into downtown, there needs to be, I like the idea of the artwork on the front corner of the building. If that could be replicated in another form of artwork on another part of the building that faces Marshall, you know, to make that building unique, to make it stand out.
If we have art here, I'm not sure that.
The other illustration has some artwork there.
You've got this, this really cool, like thirty-foot tall by thirty-foot wide, like pow opportunity for a nice big cool mural, which I think is awesome and great. To me, there's a lot, I mean, the service has to go somewhere. And, you know, so there is a bike storage room here. This is a residential unit that wraps the corner and then you've got your main garage access, which will obviously have plenty of activity. But these are, you know, the trash rooms and there's a lot kind of happening here already. To me, trying to incorporate art and I'd rather let this be simple and sort of subdued and stand back so you don't notice it and have this really cool pop here where we have space for it.
Then maybe do more on the upper floors to draw your eye up and away, you know? I think just this massing with kind of the monotony of the three floors being... I understand when you see it in a rendering, maybe we'll be, you know, blown away and convinced otherwise, but I think the amount of stucco, I get it, service has to go somewhere, but I think this elevation needs more.
Can you remind us, this is the same cement board?
It's like a ribbed fiberglass cement board. I think it's actually, do we use that anywhere else on the project or is this? Where, this texture of it?
Do you guys have a sample of it yet or no? Okay. Okay.
It's a nice material. It's got a really nice kind of fine texture that as you're walking by, I think it's got sort of a, it's like the texture of the old hammered concrete where you have kind of the ribs, you know, concrete and it's kind of rough and cool and you see the shadow lines on it. It's got that, that sort of a texture just at this, at this base, which is a nice upgraded, it's gonna feel.
The banding that's going right over the first floor right there, is that ribbed? Oh, no, that's the, that's the dash line going across the top of that.
No, there's a.
There is a.
What's that dark gray?
What material is that?
It's gonna be a concrete panel there.
Okay.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's just the dashed level lines you can see.
Does it come out from the wall very far or is it just a?
There's a minor, there's a minor change.
Okay. Oh wait, is it the rendering?
Yeah, I think a better rendering is gonna help a lot because when we were able to blow up that view from the front, I mean, it did show a little bit of character and break in that wall. Yes. So I think for me, that'll, that'll help a lot better just to get an idea of more detail along that wall.
So this is the, kind of the same questions and similar design, but these are residential units proposed on the ground floor on the north elevation. And this north elevation on this plan sheet is, has a match line. So this is the western half up top and this is the eastern half where it ties in with what will be the civic space in that northeast corner of this building. So it's kind of got the similar concerns. It's certainly more active on the ground level than the garage kind of utilitarian function of the west elevation. But the artic, the finishes are very comparable. And it's, you know, four floors of massing in addition, you know, with somewhat limited articulation. So a rendering here, I think, might be helpful as well. And then whatever, you know, gets decided on the west elevation may translate over here as well, so. And then again, this is, I think, probably more active than what we're seeing for the design on the Promenade in terms of, you know, the amount of windows and engagement that'll, that'll, that is designed to occur here. But this is, you know, different than what, we don't really, again, like, this isn't a typology that fits squarely within anything. But I do want folks to understand, you know, the massing of this building and how it functions and those perspectives. So I think getting those renderings will help too, but it's gonna be a very comparable discussion to what we just had on the west elevation, so.
And there actually should be a pretty similar amount of activation in terms of number of units and pedestrian, you know, public-private interaction on these units. These units are a little bit taller just as a function of the first floor. This building is a little bit taller, so these have these extra lights and a lot of glass, which are, they're gonna be gorgeous units on that, on that front where the walk-up units don't have that extra tall first floor. But in terms of just number of balconies and number of units and activation in and out, it should be pretty comparable between this and the Promenade.
I think we're getting to the end of it. That was one of the last ones. And this is the same discussion we had. So this is that north elevation that was stitched together. Not quite perfectly, you see a little bump there, but it's pretty close. And that's the west elevation. And then here are some of the 3D renderings that Chase had. So that's that north elevation and that's the path, pass-through. That's got that eight-foot wide dedicated easement, but a pretty, you know, flat front. And that's, again, kind of the nature of what's being designed here with the amount of space that they have to work with between the garage and where the building kind of ends, at least on Marshall Road. So that's just a couple of perspective views.
So real quick, you have the sidewalk going along the north side of the building. Are those patios that are coming out to meet the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll talk about this, or this, I just want to avoid talking about block three, block seven until we get it zoned for the use. And then finally, for the last one, we already addressed that with the Remington color changes. Originally, their proposal came in for just one color and material and we have these four that have been included and already kind of discussed. The only other thing I want to make sure that folks are kind of comfortable with and familiar with is the architecture that's proposed along Main Street. So this isn't, this is discussed in the staff memo, but I don't think it had, it rose to the level of requiring PC direction. The one thing I do want to make sure folks are aware of, and for the most part, I think this is, you know, they've done a really good job of creating a very vibrant and attractive Main Street. And this is, again, just the south side of Main Street. We have a different elevation for the, for block six, which we've kind of seen and we can look in greater detail in two weeks. But the form for block 10 has changed, is different and it is a different massing kind of overall. The block length is different. Blocks nine and 11 are much more comparable. If you look at this and I have an illustration included in my, they're basically the same form as, but they are gonna be separated by block 10. So the strategy there was to put block 10 in that has different massing and different kind of roof form and articulation. And this is the kind of suggestion that we were just discussing for block six, where you actually have more discernible roofline breaks and vertical articulation. They've done that, I think, very well here. They've done, you know, a different design for, even though blocks nine and blocks 11 are virtually identical, the materials and colors are different in different locations and the schemes are different. You know, they don't just go forward and propose, you know, brick on each building corner and then, you know, mix it in. It's more varied than that, so they've gone to a great amount of detail and I can let them describe it. But I just want you guys to be kind of familiar with, at least, you know, and the only concern I would have had was the form being identical between blocks nine and block 11. But the argument is that you're not gonna experience those two blocks at the same time. And I largely agree with that. And it is a tall task to try to create something of a Main Street that looks organic and looks like it's grown over time. And I think they've done a good job overall. But if you guys have any questions, this is, this is the heart of our proposal just as much as the plaza, I think, so I don't want to overlook it.
I like them.
You're not gonna see it at this angle and this direct view, you know?
You're not gonna see them stacked like this.
Right, exactly. So, you know, I think it's probably varied enough that nobody's gonna compare them, so. But, you know, these, and, yeah, I don't know if you can pull off a little bit of this kind of treatment on Marshall Road on that west-facing angle with some design work, but, I mean, it seems like you might be able to.
We could certainly get more color if we wanted to.
Yeah, a little more color and, you know.
The bays or something, but again, I think that a rendering and then if we get a rendering and then you actually see, do we want the more color, you know?
And again, that was an intentional design decision. I mean, certainly if you want to give us that feedback because you really want more color in traditional forms everywhere, that's your prerogative. You can give us whatever direction you like. But the idea was that this is the traditional built-over-time Main Street. That other building, because you can tell it's big enough, you can tell it's a single mixed-use four-story apartment building, to us, it felt more authentic to treat it as what it is, which it's all consistent, it's this nice contemporary form, goes straight down the block. Because it's four stories, because it's larger, I think it's gonna be hard to make it look as good as this because this, you know, you got a Pearl Street.
Understood.
This is it. It's three-story, variated architecture, it's the right scale, the right height, it's got the retail at the ground floor. To us, keeping block six simpler and more contemporary, modern was a clear choice, but like I said.
Yeah, I think again, since it's our, it is gonna be probably one of the main entrances through and in.
Yeah.
It's just what we thought.
Sure. And I agree, I think KJW has done a great job. We paid extra for this, but I'm serious. But I think they've done a great job on this and I'm really happy with the way it's come out.
So those are, I mean, that's, I don't know if you guys have a presentation you want to go through of your own or if you have any questions. Those are the elements that we identified in the staff recommendation. I want to make sure that, kind of felt like we hit an initial cut through last week's meeting and I wanted to get the second cut. Kind of clarify to make sure that you, yeah, I mean, and mostly I just want to make sure everyone understands, you know, like, it's not necessarily, when we identify and go through all of these variance requests, it's not to pile on, you know, to the applicant. They're all there, they all have to be addressed and I want to make sure that you guys have an understanding of them, what you're granting. And, you know, where, you know, if we have any questions on the exceptions, I also want to make sure that we're as efficient as we can be with your time in these meetings because we are needing the third meeting. So I wanted to make sure we got through as much as we could tonight. And if you guys have any additional questions, we can certainly address those next week. Otherwise, you know, staff will probably focus on, you know, discussing the PD changes and maybe, you know, again, kind of zoom back out and do a broad brush kind of overview of what's being proposed. But if you guys have any questions as you go through the application materials or if you think that we need anything, you know, to clarify the plaza or to clarify architecture or anything, then I think now's the time to give us that feedback just so that we can make that meeting on the 19th as efficient as possible.
Sheriff Mike Con.
I'd like just to come back to one question on the parking, which is I think you said that the tenants in the apartment would be able to lease a parking space, but it would be separate from the lease on the apartment. Is there a concern that people may lease apartments and then decide to use public parking or street parking for cars instead of taking a space?
Yeah, yeah, and that's a concern in every mixed-use project I've ever done. It's always requires really active management and you gotta, you know, that's part of the reason we didn't want to provide a public access. He's been over a lot of this parking is that we need to be able to respond to issues as they come up. Certainly, you know, the intent and all of our retail tenants are gonna be very intent on letting us know if residential users are overusing that shared parking. The intent is if a residential apartment tenant has a car, they will lease a space in the apartment parking for that. You know, as we lease up and as we see where the issues are, we easily could provide timed parking where you have a two-hour maximum, three-hour maximum. We could provide validation where you have to, you know, have some sort of a validation that one of the retail tenants will certainly have security in any case. Or we could have, you know, basically stickers that go on the residential cars and if you see them in one of the shared spaces, you know, take it home or take them home or whatever. There's a lot of ways to respond to that and locker parking has ten or twenty more ways to do it than I can think of right now. But, you know, absolutely, it's a concern. We as the, both the apartment owner and retail owner are gonna keep a very close eye on it, you know, every day with our property management and make sure there's no, there's no issues or abuse there. And the separate leasing, the unbundled parking is actually a feature of the TDM program that was written in 2015. It's intended to encourage less car use. You're not gonna have people here who have three cars and that's sort of by design, we don't, because we're trying to limit parking and we're trying to reduce vehicle miles, we don't necessarily want people who have three cars. And so that's, that's all part of the consideration and it's actually a TDM and sustainability feature of the project to unbundle that parking. Because it makes everyone, instead of automatically having your two cars and taking it for granted, it makes everyone really evaluate whether you need two cars or whether you need a car.
Were you able to talk to Walker today?
Yeah, well, he couldn't make it.
But what about the 19th?
Uh, I didn't get confirmation, but I'm sure that we'll make that work.
Any other questions or?
I had a comment, which is the concerns with the civics, but the leasing space that you have on the corner.
We'll need to wait and talk about that after the next meeting. Because it's something that has to be rezoned, so.
Any other feedback, comments? Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I think our next step is request a motion to continue this hearing to the 19th.
Right.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion. You want to take that?
Hi, move to continue, are we doing seven o'clock?
Yeah, I think we, yeah, seven o'clock on the 19th, yeah.
Move to continue all three applications to November 19th at 7:00 PM.
All right. Commissioner Ritchie and the second, Commissioner Reese. All in favor?
All right.
Oh, okay, unanimous?
You guys are available?
I am, yeah, yeah. Is everybody, is there anybody not available for the 19th? That's a good question. And then, if Commissioner Miller and what do you want to?
Watch the video?
They just need to watch the video, right, to attend. Now, they can participate in the PD hearing without having watched the video, right?
Fine.
No, you're out. Okay, but we have enough, we'll have a quorum, I'm sure. All right, I think that's it. Thank you, we'll see you guys in a couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you guys, appreciate the time.